...of looking at the way that a modern fire department operates and why the different aspects of the operation line up the way that they do. So with no further ado, what I would have is our esteemed Fire Chief, Mr. Greg Fish, walk through this presentation, understanding that this is a study session, hence the shirt sleeves, and it really is intended pursuant to your direction and vision, Mr. Mayor, that this is for purposes of evoking thought, discussion, and future goals and discussions for the goals of the City Council as we move forward. So with that, Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, it is my distinct pleasure to come before you. And again, as Mr. Ochoa says, this is truly for your edification and to help you better understand how to make policy decisions as it relates to the fire department. So with that, I will get started. Let's talk about the agenda real quick. We're going to talk about a department overview. We're going to talk about the risk-threat assessment that's unique to Glendale. We're going to talk about incident information and statistics, our ISO Class 1 status and what that means, our GFD staffing model, our work schedule, overtime in particular, and looking forward. And at any given time, if you have questions that are coming up, just go ahead and ask me, and I'll try to get as much information as I can. If I don't have that information, I'll be sure and get back to you at a later date with the answer. So on, as a little vignette, there was a brush fire that broke out on July 9th, 2017. It was a Saturday, I believe it was a Saturday afternoon, and on that day, there was a full assignment, five engines, a battalion chief, and a BLS ambulance that were dispatched to the hills above Brand Park. And on that day, the first arriving engine, Engine 27, showed up, and all four members went directly to work. The captain went to work commanding the scene, making sure that additional resources were requested, and also coordinating those resources to do the best that they could do to keep this fire small. The engineer pulls up, he gets to the pump panel and begins pumping a line, and also establishing a water supply, which was very complex because the nearest fire hydrant was at least 1,000 feet away, and we don't carry that much hose on our fire engines. So there had to be a water shuttle, a lot of coordination that went on. And the two firefighters worked together in tandem to make sure that they got the hose line extended to the fire as fast as possible to make sure that this thing stayed at about a quarter acre. If they didn't do the quick and aggressive work that they did, the fire probably would have gone to the ridge, costing the city and the taxpayers a lot more. We would have had to call in for additional resources from our neighboring agencies, and this is just an example of how a four-member-staffed fire engine can be so effective and so efficient. As an overview of our command staff, you can see I'm at the top. We have our Public Safety Business Administrator Julie Schaefer, Public Safety Business Coordinator Anita Shandy, our deputy chief in charge of five different, or three different sections. The Fire Prevention Bureau has Fire Marshal Tom Marchant, Training Battalion Chief Brian Ritchie, and the Operations Section, which is led on the A Platoon by Cody Smith, the B Platoon by Jeff Ragusa, and the C Platoon by Brian Julian. Our EMS Battalion Chief, which is Emergency Medical Services, is run by Vince Raffino, and Verdugo is run by an executive administrator, Don Wise. Diving down into the Operations Section, you can see, under the deputy chief, the three battalion chiefs, the 12 captains on each platoon, the 12 engineers on each platoon, and the 24 firefighters on each platoon, broken down by 12 companies. Nine-engine companies, three-truck companies, staffed by one captain each. They also have one engineer each, and they also have two firefighters each. So that's how you get your four members on each engine and on each truck. And we'll dive into that a little more deeper as we move on in the presentation. So let's establish some definitions so that everybody's on the same page. ALS, when we talk about ALS, what does that mean? ALS means Advanced Life Support. You're going to hear that a lot throughout this presentation. It relates to the advanced skills and procedures that, and medication administration that goes along with paramedic work. They do pain management, inhibition, cardiac resuscitation at advanced levels. So anything that has to do with a paramedic's work is what an Advanced Life Support is. The ambulance, you've seen the ambulances, it's the apparatus that transports a patient to the hospital. Basic life support, anything that relates to the scope of what emergency medical services are at the base level. So this is something that a BLS ambulance does not have paramedics on it, it has EMTs. And we're going to talk about that more. Emergency Medical Technician, or EMTs, I just mentioned that. This is basic training level in Emergency Medical Services, to include cardiopulmonary resuscitation and limited administration of medications. So when you think of ALS, think of a paramedic. When you think of BLS, think of EMTs. That's the difference. An engine company, when we talk about engine companies, that's the apparatus that carries water, 500 gallons of water, a pump that pumps the water and the hose. And that's the picture of it right there. IOD, you'll hear that as we go along in the presentation. What does that mean? It means Injury on Duty, and it's an industrial injury covered by workers' compensation laws. Again, we talked about the paramedic or ALS, right? The highest level of training in our Emergency Medical Services model, these people exercise clinical judgment under the guidance of a physician. And of course, the truck company, that's what is traditionally known as the hook-and-ladder, the apparatus that carries an aerial ladder, ground ladders, and extensive rescue equipment. We have nine stations in Glendale, they're strategically located in all nine response districts, and you can see our nine fire stations do have some overlap, and that's really important because if one engine or one company is out of its district, they're on a call, the other ones fill in for it. And so we're really proud in Glendale that we have met our response times of under four minutes for medical and under five minutes for fire. And that's, those are goals and objectives that are put forth by the National Fire Protection In Glendale, we have nine-engine companies, and they're located in all nine fire stations. They're staffed by one captain, one engineer, and two firefighter paramedics at a minimum. And these are all, because they have two paramedics on them, they're considered Advanced Life Support. So in every single one of your nine districts, we have Advanced Life Support capabilities. Three-truck companies, also staffed by a captain, an engineer, two firefighters, or it could be a combination of firefighters and/or firefighter paramedics. And these are considered Basic Life Support under the EMS model. And they're located in the north, in Montrose, in North Glendale and in Central Glendale, Fire Station 21. We have six ambulances, they're staffed by two Emergency Medical Technicians, these are civilians, and they're also considered Basic Life Support. 24-hour resources, our minimum staffing, and you can see it right here, we always have a battalion chief who's the battalion commander. And incidents where there's more than one company, the battalion chief's responsible for running those incidents and making sure that people are safe. We have 12 fire captains, as we talked about earlier, 12 fire engineers, 18 fire paramedics on duty on any given day, seven firefighters, and 12 ambulance operators, of which two of those ambulance operators work a 12-hour shift or peak hour. They work from 7:30 in the morning until 7:30 in the evening. And we'll show you why that's important to have peak hour staffing later on. The risk and the threat assessment to the city of Glendale. It doesn't take much to see that we have a very diverse geographic landscape, and we also have a diverse threat assessment. We have high-rise buildings in our downtown area, we have four freeways that are often very busy, we have a wildland urban interface, and where the brush comes right up to homeowners and the homes in the hills. That can cause a lot of concern to people when the winds blow, and it causes a lot of concern to people when people don't clear their vegetation. We have densely populated downtown, we have commercial and industrial corridors within the city, we have high-pressure oil pipeline, and certainly we have an aging population which can pose challenges for our EMS system.
And railroads?
And railroads, yes. One railroad going right down the west side of the city, yes. Total incident volume over the last 10 years, you can see here where it started out at about 16,000, dipped down to about 15,800, and then plateaued for a number of years. And we believe that in 2012, what ended up happening was this is the introduction of the Affordable Care Act. The Affordable Care Act started people to get more insurance. The more they were insured, the more they started to access the medical, their medical care through the 911 system, and that's why we believe you've seen an uptick in calls as it relates to EMS. And also, our fire calls are reflective of an increase as well, only because we have more people within the city. The key pointer here is that in 2012, we didn't know that the Affordable Care Act was going to have an impact on us the way it did. And that was the year that we fully implemented our BLS program, where we put, we took the paramedics off of the ambulances and we put them on the fire engines, and we implemented civilian EMTs on our ambulances. That reduced our fleet of firefighters in the department by 21. The year before that, we reduced it by another three during the recession. We had five rescue ambulances, and we brought that down to four rescue ambulances in 2012. And then 2012, we actually implemented the BLS program completely. So in retrospect, we've actually reduced our FTEs by 24 in the fire department in the sworn ranks.
FTEs are?
Full-time equivalents.
And that reduction happened through not hiring, not rehiring?
Yes, we did not lay anybody off. It was through attrition. Incident percentages, so you can see in this slide that the bulk of what we do is medical. Of those medical calls, so you can see that the blue on the top is about 85% to 87% of what we do. And of those medical calls, 60% are ALS, or Advanced Life Support, and 40% are BLS. The numbers in red represent our fire calls, and the numbers in green represent service calls. And what we mean by a service call is if there's a broken pipe in someone's house or a malfunctioning water heater that where the natural gas is leaking, we would go out there and assist them with even removing water, shutting the water off, shutting the natural gas off, incidents of that nature. And so we can see this from an hour of the day. So if you look at zero, that's 12 o'clock at night, the 10 is 10 o'clock in the morning, the 23 is 11 o'clock at night, so it's on a 24-hour military-style clock. And you can see what happens is at night, what we have is a dip down in calls, and then it starts to crank up during the day, and it starts to show a really nice big bell curve at the top during our daytime hours. So about 10 o'clock is when we start to see a peak in this particular fiscal year. And this is pretty typical over every fiscal year, you start to see, when people come in to the city, they do business in the city, they're awake, they dial 911 more than they do at night. And so this is one of the reasons why we have a peak hour ambulance that responds in 12-hour, from 7:30 in the morning until 7:30 at night, to help cover the increase in call load during the day. Working fires by time of day. Unlike the previous slide, there is no way to predict when a working fire is going to come in. And you can see this, at 2:00 in the morning, at 12:00 in the afternoon, and at 11:00 at night, we've had seven working fires in those hours for this fiscal year. So what does that mean? That means that there's really no way to predict it. At 5:00 in the morning, we had 71 fires. At 2:00 in the afternoon, we had 77 fires. There's just no rhyme or reason for why these fires come in, and there's no predicting it, and there's no way to respond to this on a peak hour staffing model.
Chief, can you go back to the previous slide just to underscore the point? When you look at this, this total incidence that we have, and you know, roughly 85% of these incidents are going to be EMS. And so you've heard it from folks who have come to the podium before, saying, "Well, you really can work around so much of your call load and call volume is EMS, and the predictability is, you know, much greater when you look just at this type of scheme." But as you see on the next slide, just to underscore, we have to be prepared to do both. We have to be prepared to answer all of those EMS calls in that more of a normal distribution that mirrors the employment base that is Glendale, along with all of the fire calls that we get at any time of the day. So the unpredictability of fires really, in many ways, conspires against the predictability, if you will, of EMS. And our job is to field a fleet of apparatus and employees, personnel, that can handle both sets of call volume.
That was, let's go back, this is average during the year?
No, this is, these are calls by hour of day.
I know, but this is, you didn't pick up just one day, did you?
No, no, this is the entire year, fiscal year.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
The average of?
We had 641 incidents in the fiscal year that were fires. Of those fires, that's how they're broken out. 77 came in at 2:00 in the afternoon, 71 came in at 71, I'm sorry, at 5:00 in the morning. That's how they're broken down. So if you add all those numbers up, it's 641 for the entire year, and this is just how they broke out in each one of the hours by day. The geographic incident map really tells the tale on where these incidents generally come in. And you can see on this map, on the downtown area, that's where you see most of our incidents. So in our downtown area, you can see the lot of reds, a lot of the yellows, even the oranges. That's the bulk of where we get our calls. Generally speaking, it reflects where the population is. It almost looks like a population map, too. And so where you have a lot of people, you have a lot more propensity for incidents. This is a slide that talks about where the greater than 20 incidents per year came in. And you can see on this, we have mostly healthcare facilities, right? So these are convalescent hospitals, skilled nursing facilities, senior retirement centers, and that's where we're coming in. Out of, if you total all those up, that's about 435 incidents over the year. And so the question becomes, are we subsidizing, or is it fair to give excess calls, greater than 20 incidents, to these facilities, when some, a lot of times, people don't even dial 911 once in a year? So the question becomes, is it, would it be fair to possibly move forward with possible fees for these people? That's something that the City Council may consider in the future as we move forward. So the question comes up often is, will tiered dispatching change the overall call volume? And the answer to that is, no, it will not. The calls are still going to come in. Will it help us to dispatch more intelligently? Yes. And will it help us to reduce some of the responses? Yes, it could. It has the potential to do that. And so what we've seen in other cities that have tiered dispatching is not a reduction in the call volume. The call volume is what it is. But we can definitely see us using more intelligence in how we dispatch our resources to incidents.
Can you define tiered dispatching?
Certainly, yes. So what tiered dispatching is, is we have different levels of calls. So an alpha would be a very serious call, someone that's possibly not breathing or in cardiac arrest. Where there's a delta, so there you go, Bravo, Charlie, and Delta. A delta would be maybe a twist, a sprained ankle, or something along those lines. It all has to do with the acuity. So we would dispatch the proper resources to whatever that call came in as. But we're not, we're going to find out later on in the presentation that we don't always know what that is. It depends on the information that we get from the person that's dialing 911 and how accurate that information actually is.
So can I ask you this?
Mike.
Mike. Thanks.
I could ask you this, Chief. If it's an alpha, what would you dispatch? And if it's a delta, was it?
Delta, yeah. So in this particular case, we might dispatch to an alpha, we're definitely going to dispatch a paramedic unit, which would be an engine company, and an ambulance, at a minimum, right?
Okay.
On a delta, we could probably see maybe dispatching just an ambulance, or possibly just an engine without the ambulance. It just depends. And all that information that we pull in is going to be determined by our medical director when we move into tiered dispatching mode.
I ask that because most of the input that we get from the residents is the fact that no matter what it is, if it's a headache, you know, six firemen show up for?
Seven.
Seven, thank you, whatever. What, how does that happen?
I'm going to address that coming up in the slideshow, I think, I think I'm going to.
All right, thank you.
Answer your question there. Mutual aid versus automatic aid. You're going to hear this come up later on, on a future slide, the next slide, and we're going to talk about the difference between mutual aid and automatic aid. Basically, what mutual aid is, is when someone is, when an agency wants assistance from another agency, a fire department like ours, we need assistance from, say, all the region has been tapped out and we're calling for more resources. When it gets beyond the region, we're going to call other fire departments, like maybe Santa Barbara County, and they can send a strike team in. That's done through mutual aid, and we have to request it through our dispatch centers. Automatic aid is totally different. We have automatic aid with Los Angeles City Fire Department. And what we do with LA City is, we will send automatically, without having to dispatch, we will send them, our resources across the tracks to a call, say, at Golden Road. And that's not done with, by request, it's done automatically because we have an agreement, a pre-existing agreement set up in place. So the difference between mutual is, mutual is upon request, automatic aid is automatically dispatched without the request. So when you look at automatic aid numbers, these are the agencies that Glendale has an agreement with. And you can see, the lion's share of the agreement is between Burbank, Pasadena, LA County, and LA City. That's where the big numbers come from. And so again, what we have here is our jurisdiction providing aid to other jurisdictions and us getting aid back. And for the most part, we give more aid than we get back. And a lot of that has to do with geography. The geography of our city is very unique. If you look at LA City, they have a strip of land west of San Fernando. It's called, it's west of our San Fernando corridor, right? They don't have a fire station located up there. So if, again, we go back to that Golden Road scenario, someone's having chest pain at the Golden Road Brewery, we're going to get there quicker, so we're going to respond quicker to help that person in need. Station 50 may send in an apparatus as well, but we're going to get there quicker, especially when it comes to fires. And I've been on fires in that corridor where we arrived first on scene, and Engine 50 and Truck 50 showed up later.
Chief, if I can interrupt for a second?
Please.
The, as you mentioned, the balance between LA and Glendale is very lopsided. So does the mutual aid or the automatic aid agreement provide for some kind of compensation where we're spending so many resources in LA and not the other way around?
It does. The, what we get in return for our LA City agreement, we respond to their medical calls and their fires in that corridor and on the freeways, which take up a lot of calls as well. So like, the five between Los Feliz and 134, we do a lot of responses in there. The 134 east of the two freeway and that area just between the five freeway and basically barum on the 134, that's all LA City as well. So we respond a lot to those types of incidents. What we get in return, we get five-engine companies, we get a helicopter for water-dropping capabilities, a battalion chief to run all that, and a helicopter for aerial observation free of charge for two hours. So when you think about all those resources that we use on a brush fire, it is very useful to have. Does that mean that we can't pare that number down? No, I think we can pare that aid provided down. We just have to do it, we have to go back and visit our agreement again, and that's something that we're looking at doing right now.
So this, LA City has 367 calls that we answered, and in return, we got 51?
That's right. That's correct. Let's dive into the Insurance Services Office or the ISO Class 1 rating. So Glendale is very fortunate to have a Class 1 rating. We've had that Class 1 rating for over 20 years. And basically, what the Class 1 rating is, you're rated on three things: your staffing model, your water supply, and the effectiveness of your dispatch center. We have an outstanding staffing model. Could it be better? I think, yeah, we could always make it better. I'd love to have a fire station on every corner if that could be possible, but nevertheless, it is very good. Our water supply is outstanding, our people in the Water and Power Department do a great job at making sure that our hydrants are fully supplied when needed. And our dispatch center obviously is state-of-the-art when it comes to our ISO class rating. So insurance companies may, they don't always, but they may use the public protection classification information to help establish insurance rates and insurance premiums. So if, what we're saying is, if the insurance companies use it, there's a good chance that your insurance, your insurance rates are going to be coming down. If they don't use it, and not all of them do, there's a handful of them that don't, then the insurance rates are not affected by our ISO class rating. In California, approximately 937 fire departments are evaluated every five years, and only 30 are rated Class 1 right now. And across the nation, 242 out of 46,000 fire departments are Class 1. So this is a very elite class to be in, for sure. This is the, this is the example of what I'm talking about when it comes to savings. So Class 1 rating actually saves residents and businesses owner, business owners money on their property insurance, and this is how it looks. So if you're spending, if you have a Class 2 department, you're spending 55 cents on the dollar compared to a Class 10 fire department, you're saving 2 cents on the dollar if you're Class 1. So that's, over the life of our fire department, that's quite a significant savings of money. Question comes in, private versus public, is it better to hire a private ambulance service to run your fire department? And I'm going to say, as your fire chief, absolutely not. There are a lot of things that go into planning and running a fire department, especially with an ambulance service like we have in Glendale. First of all, we have cost-effective employees. Our employees are civilians, they don't carry the safety, they don't carry the safety retirement. We have a young pool of talented employees who reflect our community, and that's really extremely important as we grow our own. We bring people in from the community, they join our fire department as ambulance operators, they get to know the culture, they have the advantage of being able to see what firefighters do, whether they really want to pursue this as a permanent career or not. And as a result, we have brought many of our ambulance operators up to the level of firefighter. And my guess is that it's going to even be better, they're going to continue to promote through the ranks as time goes on. So this is, again, this is a program where we grow our own out of the community, and we do provide outstanding service. And again, what we have in Glendale is unique. Very few departments have an ALS resource in every district. All nine of our districts, all engine districts, have two paramedics on duty every single day so that they can respond to those calls and keep those response times down. That's the goal, and that's one of the reasons why we believe that a private ambulance service could not do it as good as we do it, and provide the benefits that we get from having our own ambulance service in-house.
Excuse me?
Yes.
So your assessment is that you believe that private is better? I mean, private versus public. Public, I mean, what you are doing is better than to have private ambulances?
Absolutely.
Based on what?
Based on?
Not just feeling, but?
It's not feeling. No, no, no. It's based on the fact that, again, like I was saying before, first of all, we have, what we had before was we had paramedics on our ambulances. We moved them into all nine districts now. Now we have a cheaper cost to run our ambulances. So instead of a fully burdened firefighter running our ambulance, we have a civilian working for a fraction of that cost, and now, and they're hourly employees. So they don't collect all the benefits that the sworn members do. So there's a savings right there. The other thing is, our response times are great because we have six ambulances that we can run for cheaper. We have more ambulances than we would have before. We had four ambulances before, now we have six, five full-time and one part-time. So those are, those are numbers right there, not to mention the fact that we gain the benefit of having the diversity to be able to select from when we promote people from ambulance operator to firefighter.
Now my question again is, okay, let's consider before there were firefighters who were working for the fire department.
Correct.
Now you hire private people who will be in the ambulances, right? And compared to that, I like the idea, that they are not your regular firefighters in the ambulances.
Correct.
I agree with you. But we have to have, if we want to consider outside private ambulances versus what you are doing now, there should be a calculation of how much money you're spending and what you are getting in return.
Correct.
And where is that calculation at?
I don't have that calculation in front of me, but let me, let me say this, as it relates to what's called 201 rights, or the rights to transport patients. If you don't transport the patient and a private ambulance does, you can't bill them for that transport. So regardless of whether we have our paramedics go into a private ambulance such as Schaefer, jump in the back, provide that transport, we don't get the bill for that. So the revenues would actually come down. And so for us, we believe that to the tune of about $5 to $7 million per fiscal year, we believe that we can use that money more effectively. And that's what it gets down to. The 201 rights are very important. If you lose those 201 rights, it's really difficult to get them back. And that has to do with the health code.
Anyway, I agree with you that right now, we have better system than before, that firefighters were. firefighters were inside the ambulances. But still, I wanna see fact and figures, that how much we are spending, how much money comes in, then that's, at that time, you can decide which one is better.
I, I think if, uh, I would encourage you to think of, of the paramedic program in two parts: one being transport and one being paramedicine. And on the transport side, as the chief indicates, I don't know that the private sector could do it cheaper than, we are doing it considering that we're using hourly employees. We have to, you know, offer a, uh, a healthcare program under ACA, privates have to offer a healthcare program. Um, our folks are in pars, uh, but we don't have necessarily the, the same employee, employment costs that a private's gonna have. Plus, you get the intangibles of reflecting the community and building a, a network of young people that will come in, um, that know the system and matriculate up into the fire service on the transport side. On the paramedicine side, I think your, uh, the, the difficulty in showing you that calculation will be a function of recognizing the value of that slide that the chief showed you on, on responding to fires.
Right.
Because if you were to, to shed the paramedicine side of EMS services, doesn't necessarily mean you're going to get rid of a bunch of personnel, because you still have to have those personnel there to fight those fires. It just means that you get marginally less cost-effectiveness from them because they will be perhaps answering fewer calls that they would be going on, right? Because our number of fires continues to be relatively stable, but we do have them. So, if they aren't running paramedicine calls, paramedic calls, then what, pray tell, are they doing? They may be there as an even more expensive insurance policy for the city. By having a paramedics program, we're running through calls with a standard from the, the, our, our medical director and through the county health, uh, program that is going to be unparalleled and regulated to a degree that you perhaps wouldn't see on, on the privates. So, i- it's a little bit difficult to say, it's like proving a false positive. I, but what we do know is that even if we didn't have paramedicine, you, as the chief says, you wouldn't be getting necessarily that revenue, but you would still have that cost. See, and we can show you, and he has in a few other slides, what our cost is, but we're just not getting as much efficiency out of that because we're, we'd be running theoretically fewer calls and getting less money.
I have a question. Um, I did some research on a fire department that uses a contracted ambulance service. And, um, of course, the argument for having our own is that it's more efficient, more timely, that if you contract out, it's, you know, you never know when they're gonna get there. So, uh, those are the pros. My question is, they also mentioned that the collection of fees, um, if we have our own ambulances, is like 50%. Is, is that the way it works here? I mean, or do we get reimbursed most of the time? What's our percentage like on those fees?
Our percentage is not, it, it depends on the, the agency because of the payer mix. So, in our agency, we have a, a very poor payer mix, if you will. Um, it is what it is. Our, our, we have a large Medi-Cal and a Medicaid mix. Very, very few, I wanna say about 20 to 25% private insurance pay, payers. So, because of that, our revenues aren't where they should be, or compared to like another city, say, for instance, like, uh, El Segundo. El Segundo's payer mix is completely different. And so, you can't, for us to be able to compare ourselves to El Segundo, it, it doesn't work only because of the people that are paying for their services. The different, there's a difference in the insurance rates that we get, we can collect. So, 50%, it may be, maybe as hi- as high as 70%, it could be as low as 40%. It just depends.
But you mentioned $5 to $6 million that we-
That's, that's about what we, on, on average, we collect, we, we bill for every year, yes.
You bill for?
Yes.
Doesn't mean we get that.
Doesn't necessarily mean we get that, just depends.
So, by having, by, by answering the 85% of the calls, which is the medical calls, we get about $3 to $4 million a year, answering those calls as a, as a, as a, instead of having a, a private company responding to those calls, what our benefit is, $3 to $4, maybe $5 million a year?
Generally, yes. And so, what, what we're talking about, though, is, we're talking about what we bill for and what, actually, what we collect, it, it varies from year to year. It's, it varies actually from month to month, believe it or not. It just depends on who's, who's dialing 911. Are the, are the payers, the private payers paying, or are the people that are on Medi-Cal and Medicaid paying? I mean, it just depends. So, sometimes it eb, sometimes it flows.
So, does it pay for itself or not?
It, it does not pay for itself, no. It does not.
Okay.
Okay, let's continue.
So, moving right along. So, the, the question often comes up is, why do we need to have six people show up to our incident? And if you can see, this is basically what we, we respond to a medical incident. We have the fire captain, the fire engineer, the two firefighter paramedics, and two ambulance operators. So, it's a total of six. In this particular case, this is an example of a, of a call that could happen in our, our city. Each one of these members on this call has something to do. They all have their role, and they all are required to do exactly what the bullet points underneath them show. And so, this is a, a classic example of a cardio, uh, probably a cardiac arrest where the person's down, we're doing CPR, we're putting the monitor on them, we're gonna probably deliver some shocks through the defibrillator. The fire captain has his, his or her job to do, the engineer, same, and the firefighter paramedics are, are pushing medications and making base station contact. So, the question becomes, why do we dispatch this to, as, as our, as our failsafe? Well, we don't know, sometimes when the dispatch comes in, what that call's gonna be. And I'll give you an example, as we play this little, uh, this is a, an actual call that came in, if I can get it to play.
Fire Department Paramedics.
Yeah, this, uh, my husband is 33.
How old is he?
Oh, 75.
Is he awake and breathing right now?
Yeah. Breathing?
Yes.
Breathing? Yes, yes, breathing, but-
What's wrong?
I have some pain.
Okay, what's he, what's he complaining of right now? Is he having any pain anywhere?
Just, I wanna put in the toilet.
Uh-huh.
He, he just didn't shake and nothing, anything.
Did he? Okay, so he hasn't, he, he wasn't able to use the restroom?
The restroom, I gonna put it over there, but-
Okay. What's he doing right now?
Oh, just, uh, she's in the, uh, come, come out, toilet.
Okay. Okay, ma'am, just keep him comfortable, keep an eye on his breathing, and we'll be there shortly, okay?
Okay.
Okay, we'll be there soon.
Okay.
Okay.
So, there is an example right there of a call that came into the dispatch center where the dispatcher's doing their best to try to decipher what the person is saying. So, the, the other question comes in, well, can't they, can't there be, can't they be sent to a translator service? Yes, we can. We can translate up to, I wanna say, over 30 languages in the dispatch center. If that's the case, that's gonna take time. And if this person's having a serious call, a serious, uh, incident like cardiac arrest or something like that, we don't have that time luxury. So, what we do is, we dispatch immediately, as soon as the person says, "We need help", we just start the dispatching process. So, we send an engine, we send an ambulance on this one. It came in as a BLS call because there was nothing to tell us that it was an ALS call. This particular call got escalated to an ALS call. It went to an advanced life support, uh, level because of the person was having some difficulties that he couldn't, that his wife couldn't tell about over the phone because she's not medically trained to talk about that. So, what we did was, we dispatched the worst-case scenario, and in this particular case, that happened to be the best way to dispatch. Uh, I wanna reiterate to you that on all of our medical calls, about 60% are ALS and 40% are BLS. So, that is really important to understand. When we dispatch, we don't have the luxury of time to send that person to a translator, that could take two or three minutes, and where time is tissue, we don't, I can't afford to allow those two or three minutes to escape us because that could be two or three minutes that we could do, um, some very good things in that person's life in the form of shocking or starting an IV, pushing medications, pain control, stuff like that.
When you say, "Send to a service," what do you, what do you mean? You have to actually-
We have a, we have a service that our dispatch center uses for translation. So, it's a separate phone call where, where the person that speaks, there's people that speak all these different languages. So, if you would say, uh, "What languages are they speaking?" Farsi. They hit the, they hit the button, it goes to the translation center. "We have a person speaking Farsi, can you please, uh, pick it up?" They have a person that speaks Farsi, they will get all the information. All the while that's happening, we've already sent our engine and our ambulance out the door. So, we, we're waiting, we're trying to get more information to update the firefighters en route, but what we do is, we send them immediately because time is tissue. Does that make sense?
But that wasn't done on this call? That wasn't done on this particular call?
In this particular case-
I had a hard time understanding.
No, yeah, exactly, and that's the whole point. And so was the dispatcher having difficult, difficult, very difficult to understand what the person was saying. So, what we did was, we just dispatched it, and it ended up being the right, uh, resource. This happens quite a bit in our city, and so, in this case, yeah, we could've sent it to a translator, but in the end, um, it, we just got them there, and the person ended up, uh, getting the help that they needed from our fire, from our fire personnel.
Chief, but just, just to stress the point, anyone with a language barrier, that, we have the resources-
Yes, we do.
-to address that issue on the spot immediately, right?
Absolutely. On the spot immediately, we can send them to a translator. But again, that's gonna take, that could take a minute at best, could take two or three minutes at worst. It just depends. So, we wanna make sure we get those people out the door as soon as possible. So, when it comes to staffing, we, we, we talked about four-member staffing on our, on our crews, and, uh, this is something that we believe in because it's, uh, it's the right thing to do for safety. It's the right thing to do for keeping small fires small. And if you, if you don't know about the two-in-two-out law, it's a federal law passed by OSHA, uh, and basically what it says is that two people that enter a building without a rescue problem must have two people on the outside to rescue them. So, that means that if you have two fire, a, a fire captain and a, and a firefighter going inside the building to fight the fire, the engineer and the other firefighter need to be outside to protect those two, just in case something were to go bad. And there's a lot of other intricacies to that law, but that's basically what the law says. That is what two-in-two-out is, and that's what it means, and that's how we keep our small fires small in the city of Glendale. There's an, uh, engineering, Fire Engineering Magazine article, if you wanna look that up, it's by Kevin Wilson, and it talks in great depth about why four-member staffing is so important on our engine companies and truck companies.
I'm sorry, say again? What was the last sentence?
Kevin Wilson, uh, wrote an article in Fire Engineering Magazine in 2009 about fire department staffing. If you would like to look that up, uh, you can Google it and it comes right up, and it's got, uh, a lot of information regarding, uh, staffing on your fire engines and your fire cars.
So, and who's Kevin Wilson?
He is a, uh, he's a person who wrote that article, and he's a fire, I believe he's a fire captain. Yes.
And back to that federal law, it says that you definitely have to have two-in-two-out?
You have to have two-in-two-out when there's not a rescue problem.
How the others, how the other cities are doing when they don't do that? They have three people there.
What they do is, they have to call for additional resources and wait before they can make entry into that building.
Okay.
Allowing the time/temperature curve to get ahead of them, which is not good.
I can, and tell you, in, in my former city, we ran three-person engines, and as a result, as the chief indicates, you'd have the engine show up, and you'd wait for the other engine from the other station to show up before you could actually make the entrance into the building. And the idea is, could you do it with three? You could. Would you do it? Not if you could afford not to.
So, chief, is this still an issue? I know a few years back, this was a very, uh, hot issue that came before council. There were some members of the community, a former fire chief slash police chief slash, I don't know, activist, who said that, that absolutely, um, four, uh, four is an excessive number. You should do three, you can cut down your, your FTEs, and it would fit in your budget. Um, I haven't heard that discussion lately. I mean, that, that's why I'm raising it. Has it been more accepted, uh, throughout communities, or is there still a, um, you know, a, uh, an push to move the cities that have four to three?
I have not seen that push lately, and the reason why I have not seen that push lately is you, you, as we go on in the presentation, you're gonna see more, uh, organizations that come out that, in support of having at least four people on your engine and your truck companies. And so, as we move forward on this presentation, you'll see, uh, fire companies with four firefighters provide an increased level of efficiency, obviously, and safety compared to companies with three firefighters, as it, as, uh, as it's been said by many organizations, such as the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health. NIOSH basically has an article out that says, uh, or a standard out that says that in, uh, if you do not staff with, if they're understaffed, in other words, less than four, you're going to see an incurred, increase, uh, you're gonna incur increased on-duty injuries and associated costs with that, and you're more susceptible to line-of-duty deaths. And by the way, the pictures that you're seeing up here are fires from our previous fiscal year. The National Fire Protection Association says, uh, in NFPA 1710, which is a standard, talks about four on-duty personnel are recommended for fire companies whose primary functions are to pump and deliver water and perform basic firefighting at fires, such as search and rescue. As it relates to a guide for emergency medical services, NFPA 450, which is another standard, says that most experts agree that four responders, at least two trained in advanced cardiac life support or ACLS, has two trained in li- basic life support are the minimum required to provide ACLS to cardiac arrest victims. And if you go back to that photo that I had previously, it shows all four of our members from the engine company and our two ambulance operators are working to bring good things to the people that are having difficult times medically, and that's what it's all about. Fire Department Staffing Standards, as it relates to the International City and County Management Association, says this: jurisdictions with tactical hazards, high hazard occupancies, high incident frequencies, geographical restrictions, by the way, we have all of those, these companies should be staffed with a minimum of five or six members on duty. So, this is, this is right out of, uh, journals and publications that we, we prescribe to.
But chief, you're just cherry-picking these articles, aren't you?
I'm not, uh, no, sir, I am not-
These were the arguments that we heard, and this is not a new presentation. You've, you've, and this is maybe three, four, five years ago, it was a continual discussion. And when you came up with these recommendations by the fire protection institutes, they would say, "Oh, well, here's an article in, you know, Firefighter Magazine or Better Government Magazine that says you don't need four."
Again, I, I, what I tried to do is, I tried to bring about a variety of resources that point to NIOSH, NFPA, ICMA, these are, we're, we're trying to get a diverse group of publications that actually point to the fact that four-member staffing is a minimum. For a, a, a city like ours, right? We're talking about a very unique city, we talked about the, the hazards that we have in our city, the risks that we have in our city, and the very unique geographical shape of our city and its location within the area that it is, we need to have four members on our, as a minimum. And that's, this is exactly what it's talking about right here in this slide.
But I think the takeaway is also that you, you could have more than four, but four is what we can afford. Ideally, we'd have five or six, just like if you had to, you could do three, but you get to that point of saying, well, do you, can you afford to have four? And if you can afford to have it, then that's what you want.
Do any cities staff up that high?
Not that I'm aware of, not, not in the wake of, of the Great Recession, and not, I think, again, as the chief indicates, not those that have the, uh, the types of, of geographic, um, and topographical challenges that we have. If we were in a very small city that had a very limited and, and focused, uh, threat assessment, maybe we would because we don't have to be running that far. Maybe there's only, uh, two, uh, districts that, that they have to cover, so, yeah, they probably would run with five or six. But in a major metropolitan city like Glendale, I don't know that you, at least, uh, under the budget constraints that we have, we couldn't afford to. But it does speak to the policymaking authority of the city council by way of setting budgets.
And it all comes down to the, the, the load of calls, number of calls that you get on the, on fire. If you get 680 calls a year, which is fire-related, uh, you know, that's, that's what, 20 calls a day between nine departments, nine different stations, it's not that many calls. But my, my question is, the way that they're situated are, are, are fire stations, they're situated to get from any point of the city within like three to five minutes? Is that, is that how it is?
Yes, with a, a few exceptions, very few exceptions.
On north.
On the north side of town, yes. But for the most part, yeah. We're anywhere from three to five minutes to any part in the city.
For the habitable areas.
Of the habitable areas, yeah.
Because the way I see it is, pretty much below Glen Oaks, all the stations are located below Glen Oaks. And we have one in Verdugo Woodlands and one in Montrose area.
Uh-huh.
Am I correct?
And one in Montrose and one in Locker Center.
Yeah. One in Montrose, one in Locker Center?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. At the very north end there?
Off of New York and Community.
The two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. We have nine stations, right?
Right.
I'm looking at this map. So there is one in Verdugo Woodlands, and one in...
That's the one in Locker Center. That's... The one below that is the one in Montrose.
This is Montrose?
Yes.
Where is the one on Verdugo?
Right below it.
Oh, right below, okay. So it's... Okay, then I'm off, am I? Okay, okay. So Verdugo is here. Cunyada is here, and there is one on Chevy Chase. Okay. So if I'm between one on Montrose and Cunyada, these two engine companies, they can get to a point in between within four minutes?
Generally speaking, yes. On a medical call. On a fire, five minutes.
Four thirty.
Well, yeah, four thirty in our case.
Because of the size of the apparatus?
No, because they have to get dressed in their turnout clothing, their safety equipment. And that takes a little more time.
Okay, let's continue.
And again, as we relate to truck company staffing, again, this is the NFPA National Fire Protections. It talks about how a minimum of four-on-duty personnel should be used for when you're doing functions such as ventilation, search and rescue, aerial operations, and the like. We have a policy in Glendale where we will not staff a truck company with less than four people. Just will not staff it. So if we had to run down for a... Whatever the case may be, we will never staff a truck company with less than four people. It will always have four people on it. An engine company, we can run down for a little short amount of time. If someone had to go to a meeting, or if someone went home sick during the middle of a shift, we can run down for a short time. We will not staff a truck company with less than four just because it's too risky. It's too dangerous. Our work schedule. So let's dive into our work schedule a little bit. We have a three-platoon system where we work an A platoon, a B platoon, and a C platoon. Twenty-four-hour shifts, which is the predominant schedule in California and the western United States. We have... We work from 7:30 in the morning till 7:30 the next morning. And of course, this is a nine-day rotating cycle, and we're going to show you that. But this is... Keep in mind that every day, 365 days a year, when you wake up with your kids and you open up presents on Christmas Day, there's people in the fire stations ready to protect you. They're working on every holiday. They're working on every birthday. You name it, they're always going to be there. And they're always putting their... They're always in the fire stations ready to serve.
One question.
Yes.
When you say 7:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., so...
7:30 a.m. to a.m.
I'm sorry, to 7:30 a.m. That's what I meant, 24 hours. So what happens? They are... One group of firefighters going, the other one starts right away?
That's right.
There's no overlap?
There's no overlap. No, when they come in at 7:30 in the morning, the new shift, the old shift, the shift that was on their previous 24 hours goes home. And then the next shift starts. And it just continues in perpetuity.
Because I was told in the police department that they have this little bit overlap, that it's like 30 minutes or so. One group comes. By the time the other goes...
We have no overlap. However, we have a system where our culture is that we get to the fire station... Most of our firefighters get to the station at least a half hour before their starting time to get themselves ready to go, to outfit the engine with whatever it needs from the previous 24 hours, get the story of whatever happened on the previous 24 hours, talk to their counterpart, and then they show up to work, and they're ready to go at 7:30 in the morning.
Chief, if a team is out on call and the shift expires, do they... Are the... Does overtime kick in? How does that work?
Overtime does kick in. We call that beyond tour. A beyond-tour overtime. But basically, what ends up happening, if it's a major incident, what we'll do is we'll have the firefighters that are coming on the shift get into a utility and drive out to the scene. And they'll relieve the firefighters that were fighting the fire. And then they'll go back to the station and get cleaned up and go home. But for the most part, if it's a medical call that's only going to last 45 minutes to an hour, we just stay at the station and wait for the firefighters to arrive back from either the hospital or from the call. So again, the... Back to the work schedule. The work week averages 56 hours per week. And of those, 53 hours are worked at straight time. The federal law, under the Fair Labor Standards Act, requires that overtime be paid for all hours worked in excess of 53. That's called FLSA pay. And every fire department that works a 24-hour shift has a 56-hour week, gets three hours a week of FLSA overtime. That's called the FLSA 7K exemption. And it's a federal law.
That's every firefighter gets that?
Every firefighter gets that that's on a 56-hour week. Yes. Everybody that works a 56-hour week gets that.
How many of our firefighters are on a 56-hours a week?
150.
150 of them?
Yes.
So 150 times three hours a week, that's 450 times four weeks. That's about 1,800 hours.
A month.
A month.
Yes. It's correct.
Okay.
Overtime, straight off.
Yes. Now, we're going to get into why this is more efficient later on. But really, what you have to understand is that the 7K exemption only applies to fire brigades. It only applies to fire departments. That's the language in the FLSA 7K exemption. You can't do this for police departments. You can't do it for the power department. You can only do this for fire departments.
And this doesn't include the days that somebody is going on vacation or somebody is sick today?
Does not include that. Yeah, we'll talk about that shortly. So again, as we said, Mr. Mayor, we have 50 people on each platoon. The A platoon, B platoon, and C platoon have 50 people each for a total of 150 people in the operations section. These are the people that staff your fire engines, your fire trucks, and your battalion command team. This is what the nine-day work cycle looks like. So you can see, you work a day, you're off a day. You work a day, you're off a day. You work a day, and you're off for four days. So A platoon works, they're off a day, they work a day, they're off a day, they work a day, and they're off for four days. And the cycle starts all over again in perpetuity, for basically nine days every cycle. So A platoon works out of the nine days. A platoon's working three days. B platoon's going to work three days in their own new cycle. C platoon's going to work three out of the nine in their own cycle. And it just repeats itself over and over and over. So let's look at the Wednesday on A platoon. We're going to dive down into that day, keeping in mind that we have 50 people on duty on that Wednesday, the A shift. Knowing that we have two other platoons of full-time people that are off that day, we have two vacancies or two absences that show up, for whatever reason. Could be someone's taken vacation, someone's off sick, someone's off injured. And we have two absences that create two openings. With those openings, we have to fill them. And how do we fill them? We fill them with full-time employees from the other platoons. They work a 56-hour week. So any time that they put in above 53 hours or their normal work schedule is going to be overtime. So as we move forward, the first absence is filled by a B platoon member. And they're getting overtime in that spot. The second spot is filled by a C platoon member, again, getting overtime. So as we fill in these spots, it's important to realize that the pool of people that we have come from the other two platoons. 150 people is what we have to fill the platoon. 50 people are already used up on A platoon. So if someone takes off, it's going to be filled up by someone on the other platoons. And that's the scenario you have in front of you.
Okay, so I have a question.
Yes.
And this may be like, I'm not understanding this, but they already get... They get three days. They work 53 days. They get three extra day... I mean, 53 hours. They get three hours automatically overtime.
Correct.
The first three hours that they do this... Yeah, I call it substituting for these. Is that part of those three hours that they're already getting paid?
It's in addition to...
Or do they get double?
No, they don't get double time.
Well, they're getting three extra days.
Three extra hours.
Three extra hours, every week.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Three extra hours. And then they're working overtime.
Correct.
And they're getting... So they're getting paid the three extra hours, plus they're going to get two extra hours of overtime for filling in for these two?
No, they're going to get 24. The 24 hours in a shift...
One shift is 24 hours.
All right.
It's okay.
This is why we're here.
I know, I'm not sure I understand.
If you're not understanding, I'll explain it like this. Remember that in the 56-hour-a-week, they get automatically three hours of overtime. That's just their regular duty schedule.
Pursuant to the federal law.
Pursuant to federal law.
Correct.
They're going to come in now, and they're going to fill in these other absences, right? So two people either called in sick, took vacation, a variety of reasons why they may be off. And we're going to fill those with people that are on overtime. So it's a substitute. Where do you fill that substitute in? Well, we don't have a substitute pool. We're going to pull that from the other two platoons. And so that's where we put them.
It will be 27 hours overtime.
Correct. If you took the one...
Effectively, for that week, it'd be 27 hours of overtime, yes.
Yeah, that's... I guess that's kind of what I was alluding to.
Let me just try to understand this a little bit better. Because I think the staffing on each shift has to be right next to this, so we know what it is. So there are three platoons, A, B, and C. 50 are... And these are divided between nine stations, right?
Yes.
Platoon A is eight-hour shift between nine...
They're 24-hour shifts.
24-hour shifts.
Yes, 24-hour shifts.
So you have 50 people there... 50 people divided by nine stations, right?
Mm-hmm.
There's a 50 people... Platoon A is 50 people for nine stations. That is what... That's about almost six people.
Average per station, but that's...
Per station.
That's... Yeah, what we ended up having is we have three truck companies.
I understand. So that's why I was pulling the... You have one captain, one engineer, two firefighters. That's why I was looking at this.
Correct.
Some of them have more staffing, some stations have less.
Correct.
So they are there 24 hours a day. So they sleep at night if they have to. And if there's a call, they wake up and...
That's correct.
Answer the call. So, okay. All right. Got it.
Okay, so what we have is constant staffing. And the policy that we currently follow in the Glendale Fire Department is that we always staff with 50 members on duty. Always staff with 50 members on duty. So that means that when a captain, an engineer, a firefighter, paramedic, or firefighter calls in sick or has a vacation day or is injured or has a training day outside the city, we will always backfill for that person as a policy. And so this is what we call a minimum staffing model. And constant staffing ensures that minimum staffing is met.
Chief, what's the alternative to minimum staffing?
The alternative is to run down. So when someone takes off, then you're gonna be on that particular engine company staff with three.
So you've heard of, of cities that will quote-unquote brown out a fire engine, an engine company? And so that means that they've run down the staffing on that, so they just won't operate the engine company. So if you think of the station that's in Chevy Chase, and we brown out that station, if there is a call that has to go there, especially for a fire, we're gonna take an engine company from a different district and run them over there, so five minutes maybe becomes 10 minutes.
So I, I guess you, when I asked that question, you immediately thought, what's the alternative? Downgrading from the minimum. My question is, is there an upgrade? And the reason I ask that is, you know, we always talk about how many unfilled positions there are. They're budgeted, but they're not filled. Well, if we maintain this 50-person shift model, wh- wh- why are we trying to hire more, more, or what are these additional firefighters for?
I don't understand, I'm sorry.
Do we have, I mean, are we fully staffed?
Not right now.
We have, we have an academy right now.
No, we're, we have five openings right now, uh, when, when the people that are in paramedic school are gonna graduate next month, so.
So if, if we have the 50, um, right, we, currently we have enough people to have 50 people per shift?
We do through, uh, using overtime to, to backfill.
Okay, so overtime now isn't, it's not that people are sick, but we're, we don't even have the 50 to fill?
Correct.
Because of vacancies.
I guess I'm, I'm trying to, I think all of us are trying to understand that there's a fundamental understaffing problem in the department, which forces us to constantly, as a matter of rule, rely on overtime firefighters.
There, there is an overs, there's an understaffing-
Because it's one thing for, you know, like this model suggests, two firefighters to be absent, to be absent. I mean, that day something happens, family, or, or illness, health, and we fill those, and it's a different matter when we're just not, we don't have enough bodies to satisfy the 50-person model.
That's, that is, I think, the, the, when you go to the, the next slide, that, that one, I think that kind of speaks to the question that you're raising with respect to hiring more bodies. And what is that, that cost? Because any given shift, we do have openings on that shift.
Of course.
Right? So you could get to a point, if the goal is to have a 50-person shift, using our numbers from 1617, you'd wanna have 61 people on shift, and then just not fill those additional 11.
Right.
In the context of our system today, that would be considered an overhire, and we don't have the negotiated ability to maintain 11, what would be overhires.
Okay, what does that last sentence mean? Does, is our MOU somehow has a limitation on how many people we can hire?
Currently, we can overhire by six. But I, I would also venture to say that if you overhire by, and this, this is a, a topic that we were gonna cover in the future in this presentation, but is it, is it better to overhire? Well, not necessarily. Because there are days when people do not take off. And so then you're covering the cost of that entire salary for 24 hours. That you could've, right, because there's no vacancy for them to be put into.
You could end up with 61 people on when you really need 50 people on, and you're fronting that cost.
And then the question becomes, is there some kind of a golden middle, where you have just enough bodies, but not-
And, and we-
There's so many that it's an overhire.
We believe right now that, that the, the golden number is as close to six as we can get, because you have two extra firefighters per platoon, or per shift, and that you can kind of put them in the spots that they need to be.
Does this report quantify, sort of dollarize or monetize that six additional person versus-
It doesn't, no.
It doesn't?
But I think that would give you a good idea about what the, the impact is.
Okay.
I have, I, just one more question about the absences. Uh, the example that you're giving shows two absences. What's the average per day?
Right here.
Oh.
Per day?
Oh, that's it, 11.2?
Yes, 11.2 for all five ranks. We average about 11.2 openings per day.
Oh, okay.
So, for all those reasons down below.
So out of, out of 50 positions, 11.2, you backfill with overtime?
Yes.
On, on top of that, there's the three hours a, a day, a week overtime. And what is, how many, how many unfilled positions do we have?
I'm sorry?
Unfilled positions, vacancies.
Oh, vacancies right now? Uh, well, when we have our people graduate from paramedic school next month, we'll have five vacancies.
Now, how many do we have now?
Right now, we have, uh, I think it's 12. Because seven are graduating from paramedic school.
How long has it been like that?
It's been that way for, uh, six months, and then before that, we had another graduation from the recruit academy, the paramedics came online. So, what, here, here's the, here's the issue, if you, if you wanna know. What we wanted, what we try to do is we try to keep staffed up as much as we can, but because of the fact that we have to run them through a recruit academy, and our own people teach that recruit academy, that costs overtime as well. So we're trying to keep the cost low, to where we can have at least a minimum of 10 people enter the recruit academy, right? Because the, the training is really important. We, we value our training in our recruit academy, to make sure that everybody meets the minimum standard, so that we don't have line-of-duty deaths and injuries.
Chief, is there any, um, is there anything special about the the actual way that you assign the platoons, rather than an A, B, C, A, B, C, A, B, C, in that nine-day period? So you have on, off, on, off, on, and then off for four? A, C, A, B, A, B, C, B, C. What difference, if any, would it make with a straight A, B, C, A, B, C, A, B, C?
You could do that in a, in a nine-day cycle, it just makes more sense to, for continuity.
Just gives them a little, like a weekend, I mean, it's a, it's a break.
Yeah, it's a break.
Okay, so there's no, there's no operational difference, other than just, uh, working a little bit more-
Get a weekend off.
And then getting that four-day chunk.
Four days off, exactly.
Ah, okay.
Yes. So let's look at the work schedule from this standpoint. A lot of people ask, why don't firefighters work a 40-hour week? Hopefully, this is gonna explain that. So a 56-hour work week allows the department to provide the same level of service as a 40-hour work week with 60 less positions, which results in a lower overall cost. So if you take 50 positions per day, times 24 hours, times seven days a week, you come up with 8,400 hours. If you did, take those 8,400, 8,400 hours, and that's what we staff to, that's our, that's our minimum staffing in, in the Glendale Fire Department, you have to fill 8,400 hours. If you divide that by 56 hours, you have 150 positions that fill those spots. If you take that same 8,400 hours, and you only fill it with 40-hour employees, you now have to hire 210 employees, which is an additional 60 members, which means you have 60 members' roll-up costs, and PERS costs, and everything else. And more FTEs, or full-time equivalents, right? So those are, the, the, the 56-hour schedule actually is the more cost-effective and more efficient method.
So that addresses the three-hour overtime?
That addresses the three-hour overtime.
Which is minimal when you consider having to hire whatever 80 additional firefighters.
Yes, sir.
Which is why I think it's been carved out in the federal law.
But we don't, we don't have the dollar amounts in front of it to, to compare the two.
Well, this reflects what the budget is.
Sorry?
It would, I'm sorry. It reflects what the, the budget is for the department, his fully-staffed budget.
Again, imagine hiring an additional 60, 60 members, right? The, so they're only working 40 hours a week. What you're, what you're gonna see an increase in, is you're gonna see a crease, increase in the, in the roll-ups, right? I, I would, I would refer to Mr. Elliott here to possibly explain it a little different. Maybe clear it up?
No, I, I, just, but, real quick, I mean, I think that the issue of, it's about a 40% markup on your personnel cost if you were going to do the, the, that many more positions, versus what you have right now. So you take, you take that, that budget that the chief has for personnel, and you can increase that by way of trying to get to these bodies, additional bodies that would take to provide the same level of service.
So by, by, by having 100 and, 210 positions, you won't have any, you won't have any overtime, or you still have overtime?
No, you would still have overtime, because people still are gonna be off on vacation, sick, and all the other reasons that they would, would leave out, make absences.
This would only address the three-hour overtime requirement?
That's all it would address, is the three hours.
Eighteen hundred hours a year, come on.
But with it, just bear in mind, the, the difference is 60 people getting medical insurance and, and all the other overheads, as the chief alluded to, versus 150 people having medical insurance and some of the other monthly benefits that get capped on to, um, what goes into the total costs.
So chief, is there, I mean, I'm looking at that, I think the 53 hours per week is, is kind of dawning on me now. Is there any other industry where an entry-level worker can be put to work greater than 40 hours without incurring overtime?
There is no other industry that I'm aware of.
I mean, it's a huge, I mean, when we say 53, but oh, they're getting, those three hours are overtime hours, oh, it's such a bad thing, but they're working the, that 13 hours over the traditional work week at straight time.
That's correct.
So, I mean, it-
Well, bear in mind, too-
It kind of dawned on me at, at this point, that that's, um, that's very generous to the municipalities, whoever came up with this.
Seven K.
The FLSA.
Seven K exemption.
Seven K exemption.
Absolutely, I, I completely agree. And if, in our, in our particular municipality, and like I say, in the downtown area, where our engine companies are running close to 4,000 calls a year, that, there's not a lot of downtime for these people. And so they work, and they go home, and they rest, and they come back to work, and they work a lot of the hours of that 24. It's a very daunting schedule, and that's one of the reasons why we're gonna come up with some, hopefully, recommendations to help that out.
I mean, if my secretary works 41 hours, and it's not a dangerous job in my office, but, I mean, she's looking at me the wrong way, she's counting those hours, and-
I don't know if it's a dangerous job, yeah.
I'll be sued if I don't, if I don't pay that, there's a unfair, you know, a, a labor complaint against me.
Yeah, and I think one important note, as you look at the 56 versus 40, and, you know, all of us who work the 40-hour week, that's 2,080 hours a year. Uh, 56 hours is 2,912 hours a year, so that's-
Let me, let me understand this, but by my, maybe I'm, 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 most of the time, I'm good in math, maybe I'm wrong here. So, you work one day, you're off one day, you work one day, you're off one day, you work one day, and you're off four days. So you work 10 days a month, basically, am I correct?
Give or take.
So if it's 24 hours a day, it's 240 hours, uh, 240 hours a month, divided by 30, it's eight hours a day. I don't know where that, uh, 56 hours that it's, it comes to play, because you can't work 56 hours a day every week. Uh, 56 hours a week every week.
Right, and, and at the, at the end of a year, it averages out to 56.
56 hours.
At the end of a year. So there's days when you work 10 days a month, there's days when you work 11 days a month. It just depends. At the end of the year, average that whole thing out, it's 2,912 hours or 56 hours a week.
Okay, I, I, again, I'm, I'm just calculating it in, in my mind, in my head, but no matter how you, how you go about this thing, it's, it's 12 months, and I know it can be like two or three days, more or less, but it won't be 56 hours a week, because when you work 10 days a month, 24 hours a day, so 140-
But you don't always work 10 days a month, sir.
Sometimes you work-
Sometimes you work 11 days a month.
How many months, how many months, uh, per year you work 11, 11 days?
It's, it averages out, or-
So I just did the math, so three, you work three full days in a nine-day cycle. And that's, um, three full days, three times 24 is what?
Three times 24, 72.
So, divide 72 by nine, and then multiply it by seven, and that gives you the 56.
That's right.
If it were to be a, um, a weekly, a weekly, uh, determination of the hours. I just did that same calculation. I had the same question. So in a nine-day period, they work three 24-hour shifts. So that's 72 hours. But we wanna know what they make in a week. So you divide that 72 by nine, okay?
That's eight.
That's eight, and then you multiply it by seven, because we're talking about a weekly schedule. So seven times eight is 56. And that's how you get the 56.
Where do you get the seven from?
Seven days a week. So the question was, how many, how many hours do you work in a week?
That's right.
56-hour work week.
It is 56-hours work week, that's right.
Okay.
I'm, I'm outward 2 to 1, so let's move on.
That's the calculation, no, it's not, it's not registering, so let's move on.
So again, just what we were talking about earlier, the firefighter annual hours compared to a, a regular 40-hour employee is an additional 832 hours. 2,912 over an entire year, 56 times 52, as opposed to the 2,080 hours of a regular employee. So the difference is they're working an additional 832 hours. Good?
But they're getting paid, of course.
Yes.
Their salary includes that.
For every hour they work, they get paid.
They're doing it for free, when you compare it for the hours.
Let's look at the operations, uh, overtime that we, uh, we had in 1516. And the reason why we didn't get 1617 is because, uh, the numbers have not been-
We're not done with it.
We're not done with it yet, we're still working on those numbers, the finance section there, division's still working on that, so. Uh, Fair Labor Standards Act, we talked about FLSA, that comes out to about 488,000. Workers' Comp, or IOD, injured on duty, this is when we have an injured employee, that, we have to backfill for those openings, that came out to 600, almost 50,000.
You backfill that with overtime?
We backfill that with overtime, yes. Reimbursed statewide emergencies for this fiscal year, 1516, came out to 750 or 3/4 of a million dollars. Reimbursed, mind you. It's reimbursed by the state of California, or by the feds, depending on who requested us. Vacation sick compensatory and family care leave came to the tune of 3.7 million. And vacancies, 1,071. Paramedic training, at this particular year, because this is when we had to send a lot of paramedics to paramedic school, to use our, to get up to our current staffing model, is almost a half million. And training and mandatory meetings to the tune of 30,000. Our training and mandatory meetings are, um, we are required by law, by OSHA, to have a Training and Safety Committee that reviews accidents on a quarterly basis. And so we have to bring people in, and they have to make judgments on whether we are safe or not, and so that's what that is all about, and stuff like that.
Chief, so if we were fully staffed, that would only, in theory, in theory, not in practice, take care of the 1,071?
That's correct, yep.
The, the other overtime is true overtime in the sense of folks just can't show up to work that-
That's right. But the, the, so keep in mind that the vacancies that are filled are covered by salary savings, right? So the, the money that we didn't spend in salary, we just apply it to the vacancies, and it's almost a wash, and we're gonna cover that shortly. I'll show you the, how that works out. Reimbursed overtime, we talked about reimbursed overtime, anything that has to do with mutual aid, strike team response, and this has been a busy year so far, so you're gonna see a lot of mutual aid in this particular fiscal year. Uh, we have vacancies that are covered by salary savings, as we talked about earlier. Fees for service such as film standbys, fire prevention inspections after hours that are paid for automatically by the people that request the service, and then grant-associated overtime as well. So when we send people to, like, hazardous materials training, or urban search and rescue training, those are a lot of times covered by grants from states, from the state or the feds. The next one is overtime comparison per sworn member. As we, as we look at how much overtime was used by Burbank, Glendale, Pasadena, you can see we're all right within that same zone. And one of the reasons why Glendale's 15.6 as opposed to 15.4, or even a little bit lower, is because of those vacancies that we had. We didn't run a recruit academy, uh, we did not run a recruit academy. We ran a recruit academy, but we did not graduate everybody, because we sent seven people to paramedic school.
It's probably also worth noting that Pasadena's about 2/3 the size of the city of Glendale. But when you look at the size of their budget, both general fund as well as their fire department, it speaks to the staffing that they have, and whether or not you would wanna make an argument as to the degree of staffing relative to the size of their city.
So they're well-staffed, you're saying?
They are well-staffed.
Very well-staffed.
In light of our comparison to-
Very well-staffed. But the staffing's different, because they, again, have paramedics on their ambulances, we don't.
Excuse me? The estimated overtime for Glendale was approximately 9,900,000, why it's 7,000,000?
This is general fund, this is operations, okay, this does not include Verdigo, and I believe-
No.
I'm gonna have to kick it over to Alderney.
It's just general.
It's just general fund overtime, not, not the whole package. So we're talking about operations only, the three platoons, that's what this is, and it also includes re, this also includes reimbursed overtime. So the strike team response that we had?
Are we comparing with Burbank the same thing?
We are comparing the same thing with Burbank, and the same thing with Pasadena.
So where is the other, a million or so coming into play?
It's coming into play from Verdigo, and fire prevention when they work overtime. And any, any, any other type of overtime that's not in the general fund, in special funds.
But looking at, looking at the operations in the general fund is, is the best way to go apples-to-apples when you're looking at the fire suppression units, hence the number.
What's the, again, what's that 2,500,000-dollar? We are not showing. Where is that? Where it shows, where it has been written?
This is general fund only.
Okay.
Because there's, we still have the emergency medical fund as of 1617, which, where we put, is a special revenue fund where we had all the paramedic, sorry, the BLS activity and all the overtime that's in there. Um, there's any grant funds we have, there, there's overtime in there, then we move that out. What else? Uh, filming, uh, details, all that's done on overtime, that's moved out, so this is just the raw operational overtime. So there'll be additional overtime for the entire fire department.
In this 7,500,000, does it have that 880,000 or 90,000, which was when they were helping other cities?
Yes, that includes this. That includes this number.
But part of that's gonna be reimbursed?
Reimbursed, not part of it, all of it.
Oh, so, well then, why is it? Then should, if it's going to be reimbursed, then what is the actual estimated?
Uh, you would take that number right there, the, well, actually, we're comparing two different fiscal years. This is 1516. This is 1617 estimated.
Oh.
So you would take whatever that number is, which is, I wanna say, I want about a half million dollars right now, and you would back that out of there. So for us, our reimbursed overtime would be about 7.1 million.
Okay, the, the overall budget, 1617 is 48 million and, and change, what was it, 1516, what was the budget on 1516?
1516, it's right here. Yeah, yeah, we gotta-
It's on slide 59.
Wait a minute, 1617, the budget was less than 48, you're raising now to 48 million dollars.
This is the general fund only, sir. The general fund only, not all the, all the different funds that are involved. So Verdigo's not involved with this, right? And, and if you wanna, uh, the, the budget, I'm sorry, what was the question?
What the budget was for 1516.
The budget for 1718 is, for fire department is 48 million. Uh, previous one was 38 million, as far as I remember, when we were reviewing the budget.
The 1516 was, was 43 million.
Forty, 45.3.
Oh, I'm sorry, 45.3. I can't see because I'm blind. You have to forgive me. I got it written down, it's coming in a slide, uh, in the future part of this.
Let's move on then.
Okay. So actual hours accrued and actual hours used, and this is, this is telling, how many hours are actually accrued by our operations section? And in this case, you can see 31,000 hours are accrued for vacation by all of our employees. And the actual hours used was 97%, 30,005. Um, a sick leave, which also includes family care leave, because this family care leave comes out of the sick leave budget, was, uh, basically 71%. So whatever, they earned 19,679, and they burned 71% of that, to the tune of about 13,000, or 14, 14,000. Compensatory leave, they earned, or they accrued 20,155, and they used 14,228, which is 71%. So basically, the total hours, 71,000 accrued, they used about 83%. The average sworn member carries about 234 hours of banked vacation. And the average non-sworn person in the fire department carries about 212 banked hours of vacation. Good on that?
If they don't use it, do they get regular reimbursement, I mean, as far as salary, or do they get overtime?
They, if they don't use it, they have, well, they, if they don't use it, they can get to a point where they have to cash it in. And if they don't cash it in, they lose it.
Okay, if they cash it in?
They cash it in, it's cashed in at straight time at a 56-hour rate. So the question becomes, does it-
Go on, Sarah.
Okay.
Let's go back to that. So there are sick leave that definitely they have to get, right?
I'm sorry, what?
It's written here, that sick leave?
Uh-huh.
So the firefighter has to get it, regardless what, if use it or not use it?
Whether they use it or not, yes. They have to get-
How about compensatory leave?
Compensatory leave, uh, that was negotiated a number of years ago in the contract, and yes, it is something that is in their contract. So if they choose to, uh, bank hours in their compensatory leave, they would be able to, that's what they did, they banked 20,000 hours.
Then doesn't matter how many hours they use, eventually they will get it.
At some point, yes. At some point, pay me now or pay me later.
Then what's this chart showing then?
The chart is showing that, that if you had 31,438 hours of vacation that is banked, I'm sorry, accrued, earned, they, they, they've used 97% of those hours.
Right.
So what that's showing is that this is what, this is what it, this is what it looks like.
This is a function of overtime, so you're overtime-
As far as the money is concerned, this chart will not make any sense. Because eventually, they will get the money.
That's right.
Regardless, they are sick, or they are, come, other leaves, whatever the reason is, they will get the balance of it.
At some point, yes, you're right.
That's 71,272 hours that we get, the total that we get anyways.
That, that's what's accrued, and so we're showing how it ultimately gets used, because if the question is, well, how, what generates or what drives overtime, this, in a lot of ways, along with vacancy and IOD, drives that OT cost. So you wanna understand OT, then it's important to understand what the functions are of this chart.
So it's, it's better, though, from a financial viewpoint, if they don't use the sick time. They don't go out sick, because filling in on sick is overtime.
Correct.
Cashing in is, is straight time.
Correct.
So that's what this, that's what this shows, is that it's, it's better that they don't use it.
Yes, so actually, in, in the sick leave, that's a unique animal, in, in that, if they don't use their sick leave, and they get to a point where they have, say, 1,000 hours or 2,000 hours of sick leave on the books, they get to cash that in toward their RHSP, or Retirement Health Savings Plan.
When they retire.
When they retire. And that's not at a, it's not at a rate of commensurate to their 56-hour rate, it's actually cheaper.
Like $30, I wanna say $30 an hour.
I think it's $30 an hour.
32 hours an hour. Way less than their, what their rate would be.
Okay, let's move on.
All right.
So the question becomes, does better scheduling of vacation allow us to solve the overtime puzzle? And the answer is no, it doesn't, I mean, um, we, we can schedule as, as much as we want, but when people decide they're gonna take time off, we gotta pay 'em. take time off, we gotta pay 'em. We gotta, we gotta backfill and we gotta pay the overtime for our 50 minimum staffing.
And understanding that it's coming from the same, the same three platoons. So even if, if, you know, Greg tells me he's leaving to go on vacation in six months, and I tell him I'm leaving to go on vacation in seven months, and he's gonna work for me and I'm gonna work for him, he's still gonna cover his shift and my shift, and I'm still gonna cover my shift and his shift. And so it, it's not necessarily a function of logistics because we, we have a constant staffing model.
So then, back to the issue of over hire. I understand that when you over hire, you, in essence, hire someone that may be sitting idle half the time.
Maybe.
But perhaps having that extra person there at the end of the day pays off because then you won't be filling his vacation time and your time, he'll be filling his vacation time, you'll be filling your time.
Yep, correct.
So does that, does that analysis function?
That's at the end that we have here.
So voluntary versus mandatory hiring. So we talked about, there are days when voluntary hire, most of the time, I wouldn't say most of the time, I'd say maybe, that's probably about a 70-30 split. We have a lot of employees that, that sign up to work overtime. There's a, there's a group of employees that don't wanna work overtime. So there are days when no one wants to work overtime, like a holiday or a special day, like Mother's Day, they wanna be with their mom or their wife or whatever. Those days don't get people to sign up. So what do we do? Well, we still have our minimum staffing, so we force them to work. We actually force them to come into work against their will. And, and they do, they show up and they fill, they fill the spot, and they do it with a smile on their face, knowing that that's, that's the system.
How do you force someone to work?
We have it in our MOU that says, if we have a vacancy, we can staff that vacancy with a person off-duty. And that's how we get it done. So again, there's gonna be days when, hey, I really don't wanna work that day and no one else is on the overtime signup list, so, well, it's too bad, I'm gonna ask you to work anyway and you're gonna show up. And that's part of the MOU arrangement that we have with our firefighters association.
For that, do they get more than just the regular overtime?
They get straight overtime, just time and a half. Yeah, they don't get double time or triple time.
And you, obviously, you wouldn't be able to place a restriction on back-to-back shifts because it wouldn't, you wouldn't have enough body.
Correct.
You can do back-to-back.
You can do back-to-back.
I mean, in essence, you have to, because that other shift folks.
Actually, in, in some cases, we actually force them to work three days in a row, 72 hours. And in really dire cases, we may make them work five days in a row. It just depends. Depends on who's off and who's, who's available to pull in and who's... They're singing our song.
All right, who arranged that?
So let's look at overtime shifts. They're really putting it on thick right now.
Did you plan this?
It's Tuesday.
Keeping in mind that a shift is 24 hours, we have a battalion chief, a battalion chief average, I'm sorry, battalion chief overtime shifts that were worked were 135. Captain and paramedic captain, 1,330. Engineer and paramedic engineer, 1,395. And firefighter and firefighter/paramedic, 3,000. So these are the amount of shifts that were covered in overtime during fiscal year 1516.
These are hours, right?
Days, these are shifts. Yeah, shifts, 24-hour shifts.
Oh, I see, I'm gonna, yeah.
Yes.
What does that, what does that add up to? 5,000?
So what's the universe of total?
The, well, so if you look at, if you look at the, the percentage of the total, the total shifts for a battalion chief, they worked 365 days in a year. There's only three people on, as battalion chief. So we had 365, I'm sorry, 135 divided by 365 comes out to 37%. So 37% of your battalion chief shifts were overtime. And then that number drops at the captain rank down to 30%, goes up to 32% for engineer and down to, and up to 33% for firefighter. And that's the universe of.
Is that normal? Are those right?
It depends, no. I think one of the reasons why our battalion chief was a little high over the 32 or 33% is because one of our battalion chiefs is on an incident management team, and he went away for a great portion of the summer away from his family, helping to command these federal fires. He's on an incident management team, which, which actually helps us during big incidents. And so that's one of the reasons why that number was so high.
Do we get reimbursed?
We get reimbursed for that, yes.
Well, we, we get reimbursed at the overtime rate?
At the overtime rate.
Okay.
Plus a 10% administration fee. And then if you look at the average amount of forced hired shifts, this is the shifts where nobody wanted to work. At the captain rank, there was 2.3. Fire engineer and paramedic engineer, 17.3. And at the firefighter, firefighter/paramedic rank was four shifts averaged in the last fiscal year that they had to work. Again, against their will, they did not wanna work, but they did it anyway with a smile on their face.
Be careful, chief, this is one of the most watched programs in this city. A lot of attorneys watching, so.
Okay, got it.
I mean, I mean, it looks like the firefighters are hungry to work.
Yes, they are.
In terms of the number of.
They, they understand the value of signing up and they wanna, they wanna help out the system, and that's basically what it is. They, they understand that the system works based on their voluntary participation. So when you look at the breakdown of the salaries, this is, we got firefighter, firefighter/paramedic, engineer, engineer/paramedic, captain and captain/paramedic, and those are the differences. So when you look at the top step base pay plus the benefits, and the benefit load includes PERS costs, unemployment, workers' comp, medical, dental, vision insurance, vacation, sick leave and liability, the total cost of the city for each one of those is on the right-hand side.
So, chief?
Yes.
I see where this is going. So is there an economies of scale for these benefit loads as you hire more people or no? So meaning every, does every additional firefighter result in a huge hike in the, this additional financial burden that the city has or no?
It, it's less of an economy of scale and more speaks to the, the balancing act that we go through between bringing on additional bodies on an over hire and paying OT, because on the OT, you're not paying the benefit markup generally. And, and in some cases, though, when you look at what the costs are and what the, you know, what the, the particular paramedic bonus might be or whatever the case is, and chief will show you a couple of slides in a second that differentiate how it's, it's kinda hit or miss, the, the numbers are kind of, they're, they're equalizing. In the past, I would have told you that it's always going to be less expensive to pay overtime than to bring on a new body. And then that starts to ebb back, but then as PERS rates continue to, to go up, you may come back and say, as long as it's safe, it may be worthwhile to pay more in overtime because the PERS markup is just so great for the employees. But even that will have a balance with respect to PEPRA, because that benefit load is gonna be relatively lower than what the classic benefit is. So you're, it's like trying to balance the, the clutch and the gas on a stick-shift car, trying to figure out which is the best way, understanding that it takes you 18 months to get somebody on board.
So with that, the question comes up, does it cost more to hire a salaried employee than pay overtime? And what I'm gonna show you right now is, it depends. It truly does depend. It's not, I can't answer that definitively to the yes and I can't to the no. We're gonna see in the next slide, this is an example of a top step, step six salaried firefighter/paramedic who makes $42.83 an hour with a benefit load of 80.79%. Fully loaded hourly rate is $77.43. We hire a same person, same benefit load to come in and backfill that position that was opened, and you're gonna be paying $2 an hour more in that particular scenario because of the fact that the, the money, the hourly rate goes up to 79.43. Take that same scenario, and now we're instead of using a step six top step salary, we're gonna use a step four overtime rate. The person's not getting, the person that's backfilling the position is not making top step, they're making step four now. There's a 10.26, $10.26 hour savings per, per hour on the 24. So it just depends. The benefits that come in are, have to do with the, the level of insurance that they have, if they're on PPO or HMO, and all the, the PEPRA and the non-PEPRA, the classic employees. So it really depends to be able to say one way or the other. But what our friends in finance have said is that it's pretty much gonna be even until we can say it's not.
Keep in mind, and just wanna point out, the benefit load on overtime, there is no PERS paid for overtime. So only the PERS percentage, and as that rate goes up, as we've seen, you know, forecasted that it will ultimately be approximately 77%. Right now, for this coming year, we're at 45% for safety. So as that rate goes up, your straight time cost will be higher versus the overtime. Because we don't have that PERS overhead on the overtime rate. So again, that depends on what, what the exact benefits are, but that PERS will play a big, big part in this analysis as, as we get into future years with the PERS rates higher.
And then when you look at the fire budget to actuals, the summary, we have the, not the last fiscal year, but the previous three. So you look at 1314, what was expended as opposed to the actuals, and we actually came in under at 94.9%. The next year, we came in again under, regardless of the fact that our overtime was above what we budgeted for, we, we actually came in under on all three years. Fiscal year 1516, we barely made it under, but we did make it under, it was 99.2% expended. And again, that is, that speaks to the fact that when you have overtime and you have vacancies, those vacancies cash out or they, they even out because of the fact that there was salary savings. And that's one of the reasons why. So again, a lot of the amount of money I get to spend every year in my budget, I'm either below, I'm below it by a little bit or I'm below by a little bit more than a little bit.
A fair amount.
That's a fair amount, how's that?
So chief, that, that holds true of these examples, except for the last year in 201516, if you look at the difference, the savings from the unfilled positions is actually less than the overtime. So there's a shift that has taken place since 201516.
Yes.
So we, we've crossed over into the realm where overtime's costing us way more than, I mean, it's like a million dollars. No, I'm sorry, it's 100,000, 100,000 dollars. But considering that we've moved from a positive balance of a million dollars in 201314 to a negative balance of 100,000 dollars, I think that's food for thought. So has a shift happened that we should, I mean, is this the red light where we start looking at over hire or what?
No, 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 we, we do over hire every academy, we have six people in every academy that is, that are over hired. We do that every academy. But with the, with the flow of retirements and the flow of injuries, IODs, that's, that's what causes those numbers to go up.
So what, I'm sorry, Mr. Agent, one more question. Why this shift? Why has overtime become more than the savings that we get from not hiring?
I, I'm, I don't think it has, we're, we're still, it's evening out.
Well, I'm saying, again, I'm, I'm just comparing, I'm looking at what has happened since 2013 to 2016. It, we went from a positive balance of about a million dollars, and this is the difference between salaries and benefits versus overtime, to a negative balance of 100,000 dollars on the same calculation. So obviously, a shift, no, a change has happened. Why? Do we know? I mean, is there?
I would venture to say that a lot of that comes from the overtime that was reimbursed. That was a very busy year, we sent a lot of people out.
That's about 800,000 or 700, 800,000 dollars.
But I think that your, your points were taken, that over, not just these years, but if you look back even five and, and for the next several at least, you're gonna see the same thing in police and in fire and our, in our minimum staffing environments, public safety environments, that the retirement, the, the, last of the baby boomers, the, the first of the Gen Xers, as they go out, you're going to see those attrition classes get bigger and bigger and bigger.
So our hiring classes should be bigger and bigger accordingly?
And they are indeed. Luckily, it's, it's, we, we can be, have a little more acceleration with fire than with police, but we're trying our best to, to match what we think, not just what the need is, that we can see who's retiring, the hands go up, and then we say, okay, that's how many we need, but then also try to figure in the over hire and anticipate as responsibly as we can what may happen in the context of IODs. I gotta give both Chief Fish and Chief Castro a lot of credit on the next slide, you'll see how we have.
One second before.
Which is just the spike of, of the ability to bring people back more quickly, and you'll see the upward and then downward slope on IOD.
Why we don't have 2016 and 17 in there? Because.
We're still closing that year out.
We haven't closed the books yet.
Okay.
So chief, there was an important point that you were, you were making. This calculation isn't a true reflection of how money is, you know, what the balance of the savings and expenses are, because you're saying whatever reimbursement that we got, which was, I think, about a, was it 700? How much was it 1516? 500 or 800?
Is that right, Otter Day? The, the money that's in that total, the actuals include the reimbursed overtime, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
It includes, meaning the, the money that's come in, the reimbursement is not reflected in here.
Correct, it includes that.
So it's not a negative balance, it's actually.
It, it's, no, and again.
This is just looking at the expense, there would be revenue.
No, no, this is only expense.
It's only, it is, it's only expense, it's not revenue.
The money that we got compensated is not reflected in this, no?
Correct.
Correct.
So it's not a negative balance. I think it's important for us, I mean, to know that, because otherwise it looks like now we're losing money because of overtime, which in reality isn't the case.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it could have just been a lot of calls to mutual aid that caused that spike in this slide.
That's, that's what it was.
Without factoring in that reimbursement. So I agree, that would be helpful, too.
And even assuming that that's also obviously true for the previous years, all that means is that the, the money has been in the, in the green or in the black even more so in the previous years, right?
There is no negative balance.
There's no negative balance.
Negative balance at all. Because everything's reimbursed, yeah, I mentioned that before.
Can you tell me what was budgeted for, for years 1718? How much did we budget for it?
The budget for?
I know we don't have the actuals, but the budget for 1718.
Bob, was that for, for this fiscal year or last fiscal year?
No, you asked for this.
Oh, 1718, I'm sorry. 58 million, I think, total and?
5.3 million for overtime?
No, no, 58 million total?
58 million total.
This is where, where?
Keep in mind, just as a reminder, we collapsed the emergency medical fund back to the general fund, that was, I wanna say 6 million.
How much? How many million?
6 million. Yeah, about 6 million.
So that number would have been 52 million?
Correct.
If you didn't collapse that 6 million dollars in there?
Correct.
So basically, the way that I look at it, every year, 2 million, 1 million, 2 million, the budget is going up and down about between 1 to 2 million dollars a year.
The biggest cost driver is PERS.
Okay. I wanna go back to, okay, let's, let's continue then, at the end, we will, let's finish it and at the end we'll ask more questions.
Okay. So if you look at operations, vacancies and injuries, again, what we're seeing here is the, the column in the middle talks about how many vacancy overtimes we had, or money in vacancy overtimes, and then the total workers' comp. So you can see workers' comp in 14 was 1.1, and then it starts to come down in 16, it even comes down further. And again, these are positions that were, firefighter, engineer, captain was injured, and we backfilled it with overtime. And that's what that money reflects. The middle column is vacancies. And so the vacancies happen, they flow, depending on when we hire recruit academies and when they graduate from those recruit academies and from paramedic school.
Okay.
And then you've seen this before, the, the old PERS rate trend slide. Our friends in finance have showed you this a couple of times, but it, basically what it's pointing to is the fact that in the future, we're going to see a, a hike in the PERS rates. And so when that happens, it may be cheaper to hire overtime than to hire a full-time employee, because of the PERS rates are gonna be going up to the, to the point where they're... they're.
Basically doubling in ten.
Basically doubling in ten years, yes. And then the smaller graph on the right shows the actual amount in money.
So the increased PERS rates will mean that it would be cheaper to hire more people?
Keep in mind, it would be probably cheaper to pay overtime in the future as the PERS rates go up, because you calculate that in the regular straight time. On overtime, there is no PERS. Overtime is not PERSable.
So it's, yeah, cheaper to hire to, to do overtime?
Correct.
Okay.
But there's other variables within that discussion of what step they're on, what their medical benefits are, and other, some of the other benefits. So it will likely be that it would be cheaper to hire on overtime as the PERS rates go up.
And again, in this, we already had discussed this, but we wanted to make sure it was in the slideshow, that over hires, in the G F F A M O U, there's a provision for hiring up to six firefighters on over hires, and we do that every single time we hire an academy. We always have a minute, a maximum of six firefighters and a minimum. We never go away from that number. It's always six over hires. That way, when we, we can project for some retirements or I O D injuries, and that's, that's what we do.
But it seems that despite the fact that every fire academy season, we over hire by six, we end up with shortage of people.
That's true.
So the attrition rate is higher than?
The attrition rate right now is currently higher, yes, than, than the fact that we're hiring, we're not hiring enough, because again, when you have a, a group of people leave, the attrition rate has been quicker than the amount we can hire. So we're, we're going to do another recruit academy in October, and so that's, we're going to be another six over hired in that one.
Is the M O U an impediment to being able to hire more people?
I don't believe the, the M O U is an impediment. I believe that it's actually really helpful to have six extra people, and I don't.
Well, I'm saying, is six a number too low?
I don't think so.
Okay. Why the number six? Why is it, why, why does G F F A like the number six?
That's a number that was negotiated a number of years ago. I believe that the number is, is reflective in the fact that you got two per shift, you got three platoons, so you would have two per shift, and we really don't have the logistics to staff. If we, if everybody were working that day, we don't have the logistical space to put extra bodies, right? I don't have the beds, the fire stations, the lockers, the, the places on the apparatus to put a lot of extra bodies. I can staff with an extra two, so fifty-two per shift, I can handle, but above that, it starts to get where I don't have facility space for these people. And so that's basically what it gets down to.
Okay. Okay. So, yeah, one more slide.
One more slide. So yeah, one of the things that we're going to be, we're going to be considering going down the road is, how can we, how can we better respond to the, the call volume that we have in the downtown area? And some of the ways we can do this are by fast response vehicles. The picture you're seeing right there in that slide is a picture of a fast response vehicle. It's basically a truck with two paramedics that staff. It's, it's a small pumper. They have some rudimentary ability to fight small fires and to run medical calls wherever they're needed. They can float around the city wherever they're needed. So when, when a particular couple of districts get used up, they can jump into those districts and they can backfill as needed on a regular basis throughout the peak hours. So this is something that, when we talk about twelve-hour cars, we're talking about peak hour staffing, that's another thing that we're looking at. So again, these are things that we're doing to look forward. There's a variety of different things that we can go after, and these are just examples of those things.
Okay. Any more questions?
I have questions. I want to see figures, when you would hire like eleven point two openings, which you wrote on slide forty-three, based on numbers, not now, but later, to consider that you have everybody in place, and I want to see that how that's going to be, I mean, after considering PERS and other stuff, if you have more, right now, has been said, if we pay overtime, it'll be cheaper than we hire, right? Paying overtime?
It's not necessarily, no, it depends. In the future, with the PERS rates.
Right. Exactly. You said, it depends. The question you raised on slide number, I guess, sixty-nine or sixty-eight?
Uh huh.
And you say it depends. I want to see that on paper and with the figures.
So that eleven, eleven, I'm sorry.
Right. Eleven point two openings we have, based on slide forty-three. So if we hire that eleven point two, like eleven people, how that's going to impact?
Want to see how the budget will look like if you have eleven more bodies?
I want to compare overtime with regular work.
You can only do six.
Six million.
Six million.
He asked the question, I'm sorry.
Okay. But ever, based on overtime and based on salary, to see how it's going to affect us.
If we hired an additional eleven point two opening, or people?
Yeah, because you said if you have eleven point two, then we have full bodies. I mean, we don't have any, but they will have to do overtime, let's say.
Okay.
So let's see how it will impact us.
Okay.
And so I want the figures to come, to be compared, not just overtime. Paying overtime will be cheaper than hiring people. So I want to have that. And also, on this, I may, okay, this I can ask you at a later time, so it doesn't matter, I think. And I have to study this, because I just got this, so I have questions, but I leave it after I review this in detail.
Okay.
And one more thing, that's what I was trying to remember, that tiered system, tiered system, which you said you will study in July or August. So I want to, to do that and see how it's going to impact our operation.
We are coming to a council meeting in the near future where we're going to ask for funds to get that tiered dispatching software, and then we're going to be able to do studies on it and be able to present to you what, what the advantages and the disadvantages are, so that we can allow you the information to make policy.
Okay. Thank you. Which, I'm sorry, which slide was the one which showed the breakdown of the overtime? Because I thought there was, there was a slide showing what the, the sort of true overtime is, well, not, not what, the difference between?
Fifty-nine.
Forty, forty?
Forty-six.
Six.
Forty-six.
Slide forty-six. Give me a second.
The over hire would just?
There you go. So yeah, maybe I was hoping that this will answer Councilman Rajan's question. The vacancy portion of the overtime accounts, at least for the year fifteen, sixteen, accounts for a million seventy-one thousand dollars of the overall overtime budget.
Correct.
I'm just trying to be helpful, that's all.
Yeah, because if you look at the eleven, eleven positions, if you go to slide fifty-four, you could see what the total fully burdened cost is. At, you know, let's just say that the biggest, the biggest overtime need that we have is a firefighter, paramedic, the three thousand shifts. So just using two twenty-six times eleven gets you about seven point four million. So you could theoretically, M O U notwithstanding.
Twenty-six times eleven is not seven point?
Well, it's, you have to do it for the number of shifts. So everything is done in threes. You'd end up at seven point four million dollars, which would mean you would appropriate that much more in salary and theoretically have a reduction in overtime, which would be more than what your overtime cost is.
But in answer to that, then you left out the three million seven hundred thirty-seven will, will impact that, too.
But that can, see, that's the difference, that, from what I, the way I understand it, filling the vacancies does not impact the true overtime, which is the vacation compensatory, family care. That's the over hire. That's the over hire can address that.
Okay. That's what I'm saying. We have to come up with the figures to see if we don't have to grow, go through all that, how we can impact this overtime. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
Do calculation that to see how you can manage the, to reduce the overtime. And maybe we have to look into the M O U. I don't know.
Okay. If, if, if I may, I was cranking out a few numbers here, but if you go back to slide fifty-eight, if you take the cost of the step-six individual, fully burdened, and multiply it, and to annualize it, that's about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So if you hired eleven more bodies, at two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, about two and a, two and a half million dollars. That would be fixed cost, you know, at additional salary.
Times three, for each shift?
Correct. Times three.
Seven and a half million.
So that gets you seven and a half million if you wanted to backfill eleven positions for three shifts with full-time, straight-time individuals.
You could end up spending seven and a half million to save probably three and a half million in overtime at the end of the day.
But keep in mind, I don't have, I don't have the spaces for eleven additional employees per shift. I just don't have the place for them. So if, if there are those days when no one takes off, like the holidays, when there are very few vacancies, then I'm, I have to put those bodies somewhere, or I have to let them go home. And so that doesn't work out very well to have an extra eleven bodies per platoon, because not every day, that's, that's the average that we see, but it's not every day. There are days when no, no one takes off.
And, and Chief, those are, no, those aren't just the firefighter position. Do you hire battalion chiefs? I mean, isn't it hard to get a transfer battalion chief, or captain, or engineer? I mean, I imagine they're much harder to come by than a, than over hiring a firefighter, where you can train him and put him through, and they come by the thousands. I mean, we see them lined up outside the civic when we do the tests and?
Yes. It would not be prudent for us to hire a extra battalion chief to fill the overtime from an, opening from a battalion chief.
Okay. So some of those, some of those eleven point two openings, as the chart indicates, is a battalion chief.
That's correct.
And I imagine as you go down, it gets a little bit easier, but captain, engineer, and these guys sort of work as a team, and they spend years together.
Yes.
Knowing each other's, you know, I imagine that they, you know, know what the other guy's thinking and how he's going to react and all that. So in some cases, we just can't do an over hire to fill a, some of the, the upper, more experienced positions that we have.
You theoretically could, but it wouldn't be prudent to do that. I mean, you can do anything you want to. If the council said we would like to hire X number of extra bodies, well, then we would have to go get the facilities to staff the, to put these people in, right? Because we don't have facilities for all these positions. And then the other thing is, yeah, we would have to test for that. We would have to not only test for it, but we'd have to put these bodies somewhere. Take, for instance, a battalion chief. If there's, there's, we said that thirty-seven percent of the time is an overtime position. What about the other time that they're not off? Now you're stuck with an extra battalion chief that you didn't need for those particular days, and so now.
Fully loaded.
Fully loaded battalion chief, exactly. And that's, that's the part where it doesn't become efficient. So yeah, to your point, absolutely.
Thank you, Chief. We're running out of time. I want to go to my colleagues, and if you have last comments, because I have speaker cards as well.
Rajan asked for the?
Huh? Go to speak.
Rajan asked for the report, sir.
Well, I'll be brief. You just want to go around and then go around?
And make our comments and finish that.
I'd like to thank Chief Fish and the Finance Department and the City Manager for doing this work. I even want to throw a thank to Mr. Agajanian for raising this issue. And this is the best forum to go through these issues and talk about modifications and raise the questions. I'd like to thank all the fire, we've got a full contingency. We've got a deputy chief, and captains, and engineers, and firefighters, and paramedics, as well as members of the public. We've got the A N C interns who are here, and Arten Manukyan, Harut Sisunyan. This is a very important department. I think it's, you know, public safety, along with police, fire and police are perhaps the cornerstone of a safe and vibrant city. It's important that we always look at these issues. Maybe we've got ideas that pop out, I think you heard a few, and the stronger we can make these, these departments, both fiscally and in terms of operationally, the better. So I completely enjoyed this, and thanks to the mayor for putting this on the agenda. Very good, very good study session, and I think those, I learned a few things. I don't know everything, but I learned a few, and perhaps others in the public learned a lot, but a very good, very good presentation, all in all. I know you worked hard on it. I was here yesterday and tried to grab some food out of the kitchen, you guys kicked me out and says, no, 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 we're going through our, our reports. I'll thank you very much, everyone, concern.
Thank you, Mr. Rajan. Mr. Sinani, any last? No, I'm just going to echo Councilmember Najarian's sentiments. I want to thank Chief Fish for his leadership, the department, the helm of the department, and our firefighters for the hard, that they do, and everyone else that's, that works with the fire department. We, you know, it's our responsibility as the stewards of our residents, hard-earned tax monies, to make sure that they're spent well. And this was a very, very comprehensive, very in-depth report. Frankly, I didn't ask a question that was left unanswered, and I, I did gain a lot of detailed knowledge of how the financing works on, on an individual level as well, as well as a departmental level. It's a complicated issue, and don't be shocked if we keep revisiting this issue, because I think it just serves everyone well. So thank you to Councilmember Arjani for bringing this item to our attention. Chief, I think, you know, you've, you're, you're an outstanding fire chief. So proud to have you in the city of Glendale. You know, we don't get to make too many staffing decisions, we actually get none in the city other than our executive staff, so we're very proud of, I am personally of the choice that we've made. I think you're doing very well. If there's anything that you need from this council member, and I think the council in general, you have our support.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I just want to say that there is a reason that we are a Class One Fire Department, and I think we, we learned a lot about that today. Again, I did learn a lot today, cleared up some questions that I've had, and I hope that, that, you know, the people that are watching have, have some questions answered. I, you know, the fire department, I think, is the best. You all know that, that I highly respect you and the jobs that you do every day, Chief. You're the best. And thank you to staff for, for this report. It was comprehensive, it was clear. And again, thanks to council members for bringing this to, to everyone's attention. This is always good information to know, and we need to know this to take out to our residents as well. So thank you all. Thanks.
Slavoj?
I have no question that we have Class One Fire Department, and I can admire Chief Fish, because I interviewed all the past chiefs, so I can tell you that we have one of the best chiefs in our fire department. But thirty years ago, banks, they were working, like you would go to a bank, it would be open nine to three, because they had to do, after three to five, they had to do their work and finish up the work, because the employee should work eight hours. After that, I don't want to go through every process of banking, but they came up with ATM machines. So ATM machines, they gave the chance to the public and the computers, they gave the chance to the public that they could do the banking after hours. So before, you, if you wouldn't get to the bank at three P M., that was done. Afterward, I'm just jumping quick, because we don't have time, after that, there was this situation that you can do your banking by your phone. You don't have to go anywhere. So same thing with fire department. Things change, time is different than thirty years ago. We don't have to do the same thing forever. So that's why I asked for this, I mean, to give us more information, and specifically to change the way we operate, which will be that tiered system, which I asked a long time ago from Chief, and he's telling me that, he said a little bit earlier, that he will look into it, which I appreciate his openness to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rajan. I, I echo my, my colleagues' comments. You know, Chief knows how much I like him and I respect him. He's, he's, he's very accessible, he's, he's always ready to answer questions, and that's very, you know, some police chiefs that, or some, some people in position that, when you talk to them, they think, you know, I don't have to answer, and they try to dance around the issue, but Chief is always ready to answer any question we have. I want to mention one thing, and this goes as a testament to his dedication, and he keeps his word, and this, and we, we did not talk about it today, and that's our hiring system. My understanding is that we used to hire from the fire academy, then send them to paramedic school, and meanwhile, they were at the school, that nine months, we paid time and a half to cover their, their costs and pay them the salary and while they finished school. But I think that system has changed, and fifty percent is being hired first from the public, send them to paramedic school, then you hire them as an ambulance staffer, and then they, you send them to the fire, fire academy. Am I correct? Is that?
You hire them as a firefighter recruit?
Firefighter recruit.
Yes.
So that system has changed, and it's due to the, the union coming back to us, all our employees, all our firefighters, and say, oh, we're willing to do this. So there's always a give and take and compromise, if you will, and I want to thank you, Chief, for, for bringing that, because that will give the local people for bringing that, because that will give the local people who are interested, our youth who are interested to become a firefighter, to get through the system quicker and in an easier way, if you will. That's all I have, I have, how many cards I have? I have three cards. I want to go to the public and open the public hearing. Margarita Bagdasarian?
Good afternoon, or actually, almost evening, Mayor Garbetyan, council members. My name is Margarita Bagdasarian, I am the Community Outreach Director of the Armenian National Committee Glendale Chapter, and on behalf of our ANC Glendale Board, I would like to commend the Glendale Fire Chief and the entire Fire Department for all their hard work and also for committing to a policy of inclusiveness and increasing Armenian and other minority representation in the Fire Department. We look forward to working with the chief and the staff about, in the future, about such matters. Unfortunately, unlike the efforts made by the Fire Department, other entities in our city, namely the Americana brand, continue to be insensitive towards the Armenian-American community. Recently, it has been brought to our attention that the producers of Architects of Denial, a documentary film about the Armenian genocide, attempted to purchase billboard space at the Americana but was denied on the premise that the content was too political. It's not only disappointing, but it's also unacceptable that the Americana brand, which benefits from Armenian-American taxpayer dollars and everyday commerce, would take such an unexplainable position. Furthermore, given that the city of Glendale has recognized and commemorates the Armenian genocide, it is unacceptable that a business entity operating in the city of Glendale would make such a decision. The excuse made by the Americana management that the billboard advertisement is too political is not only illogical, it is also unfair. The documentary film Architects of Denial, which is educational in nature, argues that when genocide is denied, genocide is repeated, a premise we are all too familiar with. Any attempt to censor historical facts will not be accepted by our community. We hope that the management of the Americana brand will reserve their, reverse their decision of the sale of the billboard space. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Harut Sasunyan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm here also to express my displeasure with Americana's behavior. Unfortunately, this is not the first case of this documentary. I recall very well, three years ago, the three young Armenians had signed a contract with Americana, and they rented a kiosk and to sell T-shirts right on the anniversary, one hundredth anniversary of Armenian genocide. And after Americana had approved the T-shirts and the writings, which were very innocent writings, like, "We're still here a hundred years later," things like this, on the first day the kiosk opened, the Americana officials came and they asked it to shut it down and remove the T-shirts, which was outrageous and is a violation of the contract. And as the editor of a newspaper in Glendale, California Courier, I wrote a column, and there was a small protest in front of Americana. And by the evening of that day, Americana reversed itself and apologized and told the young people they can sell the T-shirts as they please. But over the years, there were many other examples of insensitivity by Americana officials about the local community, including Armenian Christmas and working with Armenian charities and things that normally any large business would do for their own interest, keeping in mind the large clientele that are members of the Armenian community. And, you know, we have not this documentary, they're saying it's too political, they will not allow it to be advertised on the billboard, they have not seen any text, they haven't seen a documentary, all they know is a genocide documentary. And when I sent an email and contacted the Americana office, I got a very nonsensical answer back saying that we have strict advertising guidelines, and this documentary does not meet with the guidelines that Americana has. You know, the only thing I can think of is that Armenian genocide is a tab, must be a taboo subject for Americana, and just the fact that it's about Armenian genocide does not meet their advertising guidelines. This is unacceptable, and my suggestion to the city council is to look into the matter and maybe use their good offices to arrange a meeting with the community leaders and the city council with Americana officials, because going on for so many years and things getting worse, there'll be more, larger protests, there'll be boycotts, which we prefer not to do. So we appreciate that you have a discussion and come to a decision and try to be helpful in resolving this issue. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Chris Travos.
Good evening, Chris Travos, President Glendale Fires Association. Thirteen years ago, when I started this, I didn't need glasses and I didn't need a cocktail after the meeting, and tonight I can cope, so bear with me. Councilmember Devine, LA County Fire Department sends seven or eight people to your average medical call. LA Fire Department sends six or seven, Glendale sends six. It's really about patient care and what level of service do you want to provide? Okay, so this is your family members, your moms, your dads, they have sore shoulders, they have bad backs, they have everything. If you want to send two people to the call and we can drag them down the stairs from their apartment to the ambulance, we can do that. But that's not what we do, and I don't think that's what the city manager, this fire chief, or what council in the past has wanted us to do. Revenue versus private ambulances. Basically, you have five million dollars in revenue from the ambulance transport program, Councilman Agajanian. If you go to a private transport, you're gonna lose most of that. When the union proposed going to a paramedic engines and a BLS ambulance program, it was designed to maintain and keep that revenue. It was also designed to increase the diversity of the Fire Department. That's why we did it, but if you want to do that, you can do that, and the only way you can save money is by greatly reducing service, something the city manager has made clear he doesn't want to do. Overtime versus a new person. Some of the things that are not included in that presentation, the cost of recruitment, the cost of background, the cost of medical exams, the cost of the academy, the cost of equipment, the cost of ongoing training for that employee, none of that cost is captured in that, in that slide. So I'd ask yourself, you're an attorney, you're a realtor, you're an accountant, you're a television personality, if you had extra work in your business, would you hire another person? And the answer I get almost always from anybody in their own business, only if I absolutely had to. And that's in a business that doesn't have any pension cost, none. So I can tell you categorically that if you want to hire a lot more people, we're open to negotiating you doing that, but I can tell you right now, it's gonna cost you way more money, and you're gonna see that bottom-line budget of the Fire Department go through the roof. The presentation doesn't talk about what we've done and what we've proposed to reduce overtime. That includes change in the way we do workers' comp. No other labor union in the United States would propose what we did, and we did it, and it saves the city a lot of money and it gets our people back to work faster. Many departments purposely understaffed. They purposely understaffed because it saves money to pay overtime, all right? We've been understaffed for three or four years, and one of the things that's been lost in this conversation, and let me just backtrack real quick to answer Councilmember Sinadian's, if you bear with me.
Go ahead, of course.
Thank you. We feel six is the right balance between cost and having enough people. And basically, that was, that number was designed around the fact that you're gonna have an academy about every eighteen months, okay? Between the time you have a six-over hire and the time you run another academy, you're gonna have anywhere from ten to twelve people retire out. So you're gonna go from having a six-over hire to about a six-under hire, and then you're gonna bump back up to a six-over hire. So it was a balance between cost and staffing and availability of places to sleep. Finally, you know, one of the things that's lost in this conversation is the people cost, and I really think the community should be really thankful that your firefighters are willing to be forced to work as many hours as they do. Yes, we're compensated for it, and we're fairly compensated in line with every other city, but we haven't talked about the personal cost of the work we do, we haven't talked about the cost to their families when we're not there, we haven't talked about the work that we do, and I really think you should consider it. I was in the MetroLink when we pulled those bodies out, and one of those persons worked for the city, and I knew her, and that stays with you for a long time. And so I really think that every day, you know, we take on this work and we're happy to do it, but the conversation ends up being about money and decimal points and three hours of FLSA pay, and that's really not what it should be about. I really think that you should be thankful that you have firefighters, not just in this community, but in every community in California across the nation, that are willing to work extra to provide the services to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I have no more cards. Excuse me.
Mr. Ajanian? I did not say to hire or have private companies to do the, you know, ambulance companies. I guess by implication, that was the impression I left. I never said anything about the private ambulances, but what I like to have is, at all the time, this city should compare, that how much we spend, if we will do something or the private company will do, and the quality of work has to be compared to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ajanian. Mr. City Attorney, we have a closed session?
Yes, I believe.
We anticipate reporting out?
We do not anticipate reporting out.
Are we done with this subject matter?
We are done with this subject matter, because if there is anything else, I mean, we made our own comments.
There was a comment made by Margarita and Mr. Sasunyan, I'll just say that's very disturbing. Of all the places in the city of Glendale for something like this to happen, very disturbing. That's it.
Any other comments?
I would just remark that next month, we'll be talking about integrated waste management as we'll take a deep dive into the trash and understand how that business is changing and the policy choices, very important policy choices that the council will have to make in the coming year.
Flown to the ridiculous.
Mr. Mayor, before we adjourn, Mr. City Manager, you know, I'm sorry?
You're gonna recess, not adjourn.
No, 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 okay, sorry. You're not adjourned yet, we're not in recess here. The meeting that I'm requesting, I mean, if you can arrange a meeting...
I will make that call, yes, sir.
For sure, because as it was indicated, it was disturbing and it's very troubling to many people, so let's make that meeting for sure, so we can address this issue. Mr.?
One last item, sir. I'd just like to thank my staff for helping me out with this presentation, a lot of work went into these numbers and the presentation. I'd really like to point out that Julie Schaefer, the administrator in the department, really helped us out tremendously, so thank you for that, and to the union for viewing the presentation and making sure that it was up to par, so. And of course, to our friends in finance, they always, they always help us and keep us on the straight and narrow, so thank you very much.
Thank you. So we recess to close session. I thought we are going to...